I'm an inclusive guy. Well, I hate to say this, but like, oh, he's fine. Always things stuff under the table. This is a good crime. They've been through the metal detector.
Mikes are hot.
I call this meeting to order. This is a planning commission meeting for the month of June two thousand twenty-five. We'll start off this this meeting with an invocation with Commissioner Hardwick. Do you please stand?
Mr. Chairman, thanks this morning for this, this afternoon for this. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us. I pray, Father, that you will be with each one of us here. And, Father, we pray that you'll be with the meeting tonight. May things be kept sane. But yet, may everyone be heard. Father, again, be with each one of us. We pray for, we thank you for the many things you allow each of us. And again, be with us throughout this meeting in Christ's holy name I pray. Amen.
Now, join me, remain standing if you will, and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to thank every one of you for being here, for participating in your local government. It's a big thing to do, and I appreciate very much you taking a part in what we do. Just want to remind you that we are appointed by the Board of Commissioners to work with the staff and make recommendations to them for their final action so that whatever we do in the county meets the regulations, the standards, and the practices of our ordinances laws that we have in place. So that being the case, we're here to hear from you as we sound these petitions and to hear from the applicants to see what they want to do and then to move forward with a recommendation for the board. All the speakers who will be allowed to speak today have been instructed to sign in at the back table, and we have those lists available to us. We ask that you direct your comments to the board as a whole and not to one individual board member or back to the audience. Any personal disagreements you might have with any individual with whatever they have to say will not be tolerated. So keep that to yourself. The chair has the right, that's me, to limit any comments in the interest of disposing the county's business in an efficient and respectful way. Speakers are not, are will be allowed three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to the matters pertinent in this jurisdiction. We ask that no questions would be directed towards the board members during the public hearing section. Outburst from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesies and civility are expected at all times during this meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend that rule. I hope that these steps are understandable to you and that you have come willing to comply. We'll move to the first item on the agenda.
Madam Chair, the first item on the agenda under Old Business.
I would like to recommend that we table items one, two, and three on the agenda tonight.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Make a motion that we that we table item one, two, and three on our agenda tonight.
Can you hear me?
Let me get a little closer here. Okay, I make a motion that we table item one, two, and three on the agenda tonight.
Mr. Harwood, for clarification, are you specifying a certain length of time for tabling?
Until two thousand twenty-six.
I have a motion to table the items one, two, and three under Old Business of the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, it is a unanimous vote. Items one, two, and three from the agenda are now tabled until two thousand and twenty-six.
All right, Madam Chair, that takes us to application twenty-five zero four Zulu, Manly Road Investment Group LLC owner, two-one-two Manly Road, Griffin, Georgia, three-zero-two-two-three, located in Land Lot one-zero-three of the Third Land District, parcel number two-four-two A zero-one-zero-zero-five, consisting of thirty-six point two-eight acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from AR one agricultural residential to C one highway commercial to create a multi-lot commercial subdivision with various permitted uses. A portion of the property is already zoned C one.
Mr. Allen, do you have a introduction?
Yes, ma'am, I do. The board heard this several months back at that time. It was a proposed thirteen lot commercial subdivision. It's now been reduced to six on the revised site plan. So there's the issue, two items to really consider tonight with this, the layout of the proposal and then really first and foremost is the fact that this property has a split zoning on it, AR one and C one. So he's proposing first of all to rezone the entire thing to C one to get rid of the split zoning. And then you have to consider whether or not you're on board with the layout or not. So the applicant is not here this evening. I did speak with him about this, and he said he was flexible on the site plan, but he wanted to see whether or not the full zoning to C one was gonna take place or not, so.
Madam Chair, we do have someone signed up to speak on this matter this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll do that.
We have a motion and a second. Open the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, there is none. It passes unanimously. The public hearing is now open.
Hobbie Davenport, if you would, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
And for the record, that's Hobie.
Please forgive.
Not Hobbie.
Thank you.
Hobbie has two B's.
You're exactly right. I apologize.
You stand corrected. Is that right?
I do. Yes, sir.
My name's Hobie Davenport. I live at two-thirty-eight Manly Road, Griffin, Georgia. Any other?
You just give us your opinion or what you're here to say? You have three minutes, by the way.
At time, or he's not?
In the original position, or the original petition that said that there was a fifty-foot buffer that was being considered, who makes that decision? Do you make that decision? Is it a recommendation to the board? Or does the Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners make that decision?
It is a, it is portion, it is directed by the ordinance?
So, but that's a minimum of a fifty-foot buffer, is that correct?
That's correct.
So what we want to do is, and I'm speaking for the group on Dunwoody Circle as well, who being most affected by this, we would recommend a hundred-foot buffer at a minimum. That property will border right behind all of those houses on the east side of Dunwoody Circle. So we were requesting a one-hundred-foot buffer as a minimum. In addition, we'd like a barrier. I think they said that there was a barrier that would be put up on the property line. We would like a minimum of ten-foot solid barrier in addition to take care of noise and whatever else might be affected by that residential area. One thing that I want to bring out, there's supposed to be an entrance on Manly Road. I don't know whether any of you are familiar with that Manly Road entrance or not, but the way it's set up right now, there are six different avenues that you can either enter or exit Manly Road from the west side to the east side. And with the development of this piece of property, this commercial property, it's going to make that exponentially worse. Now, there's very, it's very difficult for people who are wanting to turn left and go north from the west side of Manly Road to even get out on the highway. Much less turning right at Manly Road and going south on nineteen forty-one. So I would appreciate you taking that into consideration. The new proposal is saying that there are six units that will be developed in there. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything that would prevent or prohibit those six units and those lots to be subdivided at somewhere down the road at a later date? Is there any provision in there that would prevent that from happening once it gets approved?
That will be discussed.
And that will be part of the discussion when we review the recommendations from staff.
Okay.
I thank you very much, Mr. Davenport, for your comments. That'll be your time.
Madam Chair, that's all who have signed up for the application.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I will second that.
A motion is made with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is none. It passes unanimously. Is there a motion on action on this petition? Or do you have statements or comments from the staff?
Yeah, I will go ahead and do my staff report. So as I said before, this has been reduced down from thirteen commercial lots to a proposed six. I have talked at length with the applicant as well as copied this board on it as well about our further conversations with this. Yes, there will need to be a buffer on the back for sure. As far as splitting lots further, what is approved, the number of lots, you can state this clearly in your approval conditions if you want to, if it's approved at all. That the maximum number of commercial lots is six. You can set that if you wanted to. Like I said before, there's two issues here. The first is the rezoning itself. You can see from your staff report, it's split right down the middle, AR one, C one. Really, this is a commercial lot. It's in the commercial corridor. It's also in the North Expressway Improvement District. So first and foremost is whether the board thinks it's suitable to rezone this full lot to C one highway commercial. And then second, we need to talk about the the site plan. Now, you could, as an option, possibly approve the rezoning if that's what you intend to do without necessarily approving the site plan at this time. That's up to you. The issues with the site plan, it is much improved over the last time, and you guys wanted him to get a traffic study, which he did, which is in your staff report. We talked to Environmental Health about septic systems, since there's no sewer out there. So the main issue I have, which I copied you on, is the fact that this is a road going through there, which has right-of-way, a cul-de-sac. Since the county does not allow private roads anymore, this would have, in essence, be a public road that the county would have to maintain, expensive to build and expensive to maintain. So I was talking with him the past few weeks about coming up with a possible way, and I was trying to get confirmation with Newton on this about the, whether it would fly with the code, about making that, having six building six lots in there, but having it more like a service drive like you'd have in a shopping center with parking and not having it being an actual public road and right-of-way. He said, he wasn't really said yes or no on it, the applicant. He just said he was flexible on the site plan, but he would like to know if the rezoning was definitely gonna go through or not to convert the entire piece to C one. So you don't have to necessarily marry a site plan to your rezoning if you desire. So I think there's still some things that could be possibly tweaked on the site plan.
Thank you. Are there comments from the commissioners?
I have a question. Part of this request here, and if it comes later, then that's fine. Is there access off nineteen forty-one? Is that been, is that a done deal? Or were they waiting on us to change zoning?
No, he has contacted GDOT about it. They indicated they would be receptive to a curb, one curb cut there as long as there was a certain amount of distance from the intersection, which it is.
And the road, and the roadways you're talking about comes in off nineteen forty-one and goes down with the cul-de-sac here in that present site plan that we have?
Yes.
Okay. But if we go ahead and resign, and vote on the zoning, then all this site plan you request, a better plan or whatever, I'll hear, right?
You could if you wish.
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments? No.
I'm a little troubled about the fact that a part of this is already zoned C one. Is there anything, David, that you're aware of that they say they want to do that they can't already do on most of this?
It's split right down the middle, and the way that property is laid out, it would, it would be, anything's possible, but it would be pretty difficult to make it like they want to make it viable.
All right, thank you.
I have a question about the power lines that run towards the southern portion of that property. Is there stipulation, I'm sorry, I'm ruddling through the papers here, but I was looking for your conditions. If there, could you put those up if you can? Is that stipulated in the conditions that they have to get something from Georgia Power to allow them passage for that section?
No, but we could add it in.
I think that'd be good.
I know they're kind of picky about what they want around their power lines, so I think it would behoove us to get a statement in that regard. Are we prepared for a motion then? Members, we want to close the public hearing. I mean, we did close the public hearing, sorry. Do you want to have a motion? May I hear a motion? If there's one, a bit.
I make a motion we change the zoning all to the C one. But that, I would like to make the motion that it ends at that point, that that this is only a zoning change at this point.
Not approval, not approval of current site plan?
No.
Would that also include the staff's comments and recommendations?
Not if I make the motion just to change the zoning.
Okay.
With the zoning only. And then staff can deal with the site plan and the the rest of it, which will, they will have to come back, you know, on that.
So yes, it would, because in these overlays, and we have another one of these almost right after this item, the overlay is required that you guys look at the site layout and architecture of something anyway, even beyond zoning. So yes, you would see this again with a revised layout at some point.
Okay.
If I could offer a friendly amendment, could we include the stipulation for the approval of Georgia DOT? No, I guess we don't need that because we're not approving the site plan.
We're just, we're just doing the zoning.
Absolutely.
Well, it's, it's part of what's in there, though. It says that GDOT permit, you know, must be obtained.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion based on the fact, though, that they are gonna have to have written evidence from Georgia Power that they could get in there. I can give you the contact on that. Mr. Bryant can handle it better than I can. But for the zoning only, not approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve this change of zoning only. That site plan will be discussed at a later time. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, there is none. The item passes for zoning only. Next item.
Madam Chair, under New Business, the first application twenty-five one nine Z Guru Vande LLC owner, three-ninety Airport Road, Griffin, Georgia, three-zero-two-two-three, located in Land Lot one sixteen of the Second Land District, parcel number two-three-six zero-one zero-four-eight A, consisting of one-point-three-three acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from C one highway commercial to C one B heavy commercial for a wider range of commercial uses, including U-Haul rentals.
Thank you.
Your applicant is here.
Yes, sir, he is. So brief introduction, this was first heard by this board and the Board of Commissioners as a zoning, full-blown zoning case back in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. It was denied for use of the U-Hauls there at that time. The code says you have to wait twelve months to redo the application if you wish. So we are beyond that twelve-month period. So he is trying again for the same use for some rentals of some U-Hauls at his place in addition to the convenience store gas station he runs.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm moved.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. I have a second. We have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, there is none. We will open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up to speak for a public hearing?
We have an applicant here to speak on this issue.
No, sir, this is not Birdie Road yet.
This is three-ninety Airport Road?
Three-nine-zero Airport Road in Griffin.
Would you state your name and give your address, please?
Patrick Yakama, two-one-four-five Ivan Hills Drive, Southwest Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-one-one.
Please go ahead.
We have ten minutes to speak.
Yes, I'm the owner of the Ballero on three-nine-zero Airport Road. I own that business for almost ten years now. And I pay taxes, almost fifteen thousand in public tax every year. And for the past two and a half years, I've been trying to rezone my property from C one to C one B so I can be able to park two ten-foot truck in my property. So, and do you have the picture of, Ellen, do you have the picture?
Yes, sir, we do have those pictures you sent today.
Yes, can you please?
Flash drive. Just hang on one second. There we go.
Yeah, the first one. Yes, please. So if you look at the picture there, I'm the only one that is not C one B. All the properties is C one B, C one B, C one. So I'm the only one that is C one. So there should be no issue to reason that to to C one B. And I'll go to the next picture on this one. So the last property I was denied, they said that I didn't have enough space, enough room to park two small trucks. So I want to propose that that island there, I want to go and transform that island to a parking spot. So I want to pave on top of the area and put some ramps on both sides so the truck can go up and down. If you can go to this next picture here. And I have the sketch of the contractor. So if you look at the picture, you can see that on both sides, you can have both ramps on both sides. And on top, there will be paves. And also the drainage should be included. You can see from the picture, it's not, it's not very clear that was the contractor that sketched that. So I spoke, I spoke to I spoke to Rocky White from, from the Sheriff, from the Fire Department. So he came to the location. I talked to him about the proposal. He said that there's no issue for me to park the truck on top of that on that island because it's not going to block the entrance or the exit of the business. And that was my first option. The second option was the back of the of the business. So on the back of the business, I can go ahead and clean up, level it, and put some gravel there so I can be able to back some, some trucks, only two trucks. That's only two trucks. And yeah, this is the size, can show this picture. And this is the size of the truck, two small ten-foot truck. And I use a truck for my personal business because I buy some grocery, the U-Haul, and I deliver. So this truck is for personal use, and it can be also forbid for renters. So that's why I have, if you have any suggestion or question, I'd be glad to answer.
I was on the board at the time that we heard this last time. And curiously enough, I had an opportunity to drive by there pretty often. And I was just wondering, from the applicant, what about violations?
Yeah, I think I got, I don't know how many ticket I got, I mean, four or five tickets. But this U-Haul truck is for personal use, it's for my business. The industry was fucking back the business. And like I say, I use a truck to buy merchandise for the business, and I need to have this truck in the property.
So my concern is that, David, do you by any chance have any report back from enforcement as to?
It hasn't fully gone through court yet.
Oh, okay. It's been issued, but not?
Citations have been issued, yes.
Citations have been issued, but not taken.
Madam Chair, I don't remember this from the last time, and the denial. Madam Chair, I don't remember this from the last time, and the denial, not only based on the conduct of the applicant, well, had something to do with the soil condition behind that building. And I don't think that has changed. Has it?
Uh, sorry, uh, in back of the building?
Soil condition behind your building. I drive by there probably two times every day.
The soil condition, yeah, it's the same, but like I say, I can clean up the area and put some grubs there, level it and put some grubs.
But you can't change the soil.
No, I can't change the soil.
So there's a septic area, a septic tank in the back?
Yeah, the septic tank is behind the dumpster, but, uh, it's not, because in the back, we have two entrances in the back. And, uh, let me see if I have the pictures. You got this picture? Uh, no, that's the, that, I, I mean, that's one of the entrance. And, uh, this is the septic tank, it's the back, it's the back, in the back of the, the dumpster, this is dumpster here, the septic tank is all the way down here. But this is a separate entrance. This, that's a different entrance.
So where is the septic field? If the septic tank is there, then there's a septic field for the distribution of the material.
Probably around this area here. But like I say, that, that's a different entrance on all the side of the, of the business. And this one is all the entrance, but, uh, it's like I say, it's in the back of the dumpster.
So you would not be using that for the parking of vehicles or for trailers or any other U-Haul devices that you might, entertain having on your property?
Yeah, on, on the back of the business, you said? Uh, yeah, uh, the back of the property, I think it's six thousand square feet. So there's room in the back, uh, I mean, there's some bushes in the back that I can be cleaned up. We can park all the way in the back, I mean.
Any more comments or questions?
I think we still got the problem we had the last time you were in.
I really prefer to, to have that alley, that's probably the best option for me.
Are we gonna get it?
We're still.
Um, we pulled from day you're doing.
We're at the public hearings.
Oh, we're still in public hearings, okay, sorry.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I would some move.
A motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is none. Staff.
Okay, um, so if you'll indulge me some planner talk here for a minute, the, yes, they are zoned commercial, um, the, the two properties next to him to the south are, are zoned C one B. It is true, he is correct, that he is not C one B, they are, he's surrounded by it. However, the, on the comp plan for this, the parcel and the rest of the parcels are within a suburb, suburban transition area, meaning the future trend for this area is more residential than commercial. And while that, that doesn't mean much for the places now as they are, they can certainly operate as they are, is the convenience store gas station, I think there's a repair place next to him. That doesn't mean that s- since the future trend is residential, that you allow the zoning to intensify from C one to C one B. And that's my reading of the comp plan and the suburban transition trend for this in the future. So these parcels are grandfathered in, yes, absolutely, they can have any C one use on there he wants, however, rezoning up to a C one B is intensifying it, and that's going against the future trend for this to be eventually suburban transition. While the applicant wants the rezoning for a very limited use with these U-Hauls, uh, there would be nothing to stop a future owner from implementing another more intense C one B use on the property should this place fold. So then you've got three C one B intense uses there. Also, I don't know if y'all are aware, it is in the city, however, it is catty corner to this property across the highway, there is about to open up a U-Haul place for self-storage and rentals, so I'm not sure if this is really all that necessary, given the fact that will be opening fairly soon.
Thank you. Commissioners.
Uh, C one B does open up a lot of stuff that you don't really need to have what he's asking for. Because that's heavy commercial.
It is.
And, uh, I'd rather knock yourself to that.
Well, a question I would have, uh, uh, here, David, is, one of the initial reasons for denial on this property was the amount of space and the accessibility, uh, around that area back there. Uh, the things that he's talking about changing here, that, is that gonna change that in any way? Or do we still have that same restriction as to size?
Uh, before, he was just talking about the back, to my knowledge, I was not here, uh, this new front parking aisle is a new, new idea. Be pretty unsightly, um, but that's not what was discussed a year ago, it was the front, it was just the back, but the back is still the same size.
Okay. Uh, uh, see, here's a problem that I can foresee already. You know, he talks about small trucks, well, it's a drop-off point, isn't it? If somebody comes in to these huge trucks and drop it off there, you know, he's, he's gonna have to park it there.
I think that's the way U-Haul works, in the times I've used it. You don't necessarily, aren't restricted about where you drop it off.
Right, okay.
Are there any further comments? If not, uh, do I have a motion?
I would move to deny that application.
We have a motion to deny, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to deny the application. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is none. The application, we are recommending denial to the.
Sir, this is a recommendation, as they said, the final decision will be made by the Board of Commissioners in the same room on July twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, next up on the agenda is North Expressway Improvement District Review, Ariana Enterprises LLC, owner two zero five Birdie Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two-two-three, located in Land Lot, one zero five of the third land district. Parcel number two-four-two-D zero-four-zero-zero-one, consisting of two-point-five acres. Per section twenty-two oh-seven-D, review of the site development plans for a proposed convenience store with gas pumps is required.
David, you have an introduction to this petition?
Yes, ma'am, I do. So this is a little bit different, um, the zoning is not changing, uh, the use is a permitted use. Thereby does not require a public hearing. I have some sign-in sheets back there, just in case some people want to make some comments, but technically, because this is not changing zoning, and it's a permitted use, it does not require it. What you are asked to review, because it's in the North Expressway Improvement Overlay or District, as it's called, is you're required per the code to review the site plan aspects, landscaping aspects, and architectural aspects of this, to make sure it complies with that North Expressway District. Uh, we do have, I'm gonna butcher your last name, so I'm gonna say applicant here to speak on that. So, um, that's the brief introduction.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Should move.
We have a motion to open the public hearing, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, there is none, we now open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up for the applic- this application this evening?
And the applicant is before us, if you would state your name and give us your address, please. You have ten minutes.
My name is George Chiama.
Speak directly into the microphone, please.
My name is George Chiama, I live at three-eight-eight-zero North Sharon Church Road, Lucanville, Georgia, three zero zero five-two. I'm here to speak on behalf of the client, Ariana Enterprise LLC. I'm the civil engineer on this project. I really don't have any question for the, uh, the board, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Should move.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, a second?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is none. We have closed the public hearing. Board members, do you have a comment regarding the design and, and, um, or have any recommendations regarding any of the observations by staff?
Like to hear from the planning director.
Would you like to give me a sum- me a summary of my observations and concerns?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Jumped right over your right, sorry.
That's fine, um, so I've spoken with the applicant several times, we, we met with him as well, with our pre-application comment, uh, conference chairwoman of Shaw.
Yes.
I think all in all, what he's done here is, is quality and does stack up to most of the North Expressway standards. Um, I did have a couple of concerns that will need to be addressed, uh, in the staff report. Under the, uh, building materials, this primary facade, um, it calls for seventy-five percent brick or brick veneer, so on so forth, for those sides facing streets. Uh, and I had in my comments there, the front meets the seventy-five percent brick veneer requirement, however, the side facing Birdie Road has too much stucco currently. So that was my first item of concern. Uh, number two, the fencing around the stormwater detention pond you will need, um, the North Expressway calls for metal fencing, uh, he has it listed as aluminum fencing on there. And then my third main concern was the, the landscaping in the front easement area, he calls for a landscape plan for that, he has provided one. I can't really believe I'm saying this as a landscape architect, but he might have protected too many trees in the front. So I commend him for that, because most people just want to knock them down, not think about it, um. But I'm not sure all of those is necessary to make it look as, as clean as possible. It might also affect the visibility of your store, which I know you don't want, so we might have to work on that a little bit, maybe save a few of the, the main trees out front, but have other nicer, more formal landscaping at the front and side to dress it up some, but I do commend you for wanting to save trees, that's, that's pretty rare, so. Those are the main talking points, concerns I had.
Those comments that you have will come back when he comes back for the petition?
Yes.
So those could be addressed at that time?
Yes. You could do one of two ways, you could have them come back to you, or address them and have it, because it has to move on to the Board of Commissioners as well.
Do I have a motion?
If you would, I want to comment first.
Okay, I'm sorry, do I have comments from the?
As a master tree farmer for the last thirty years, I cannot help but echo Mr. Allen's feelings. Uh, we have so many situations in which people say, it's just a tree. And if you didn't have any trees, you'd be hard-pressed to grip, to breathe. So, uh, I'm right behind you a hundred percent, Dave, thank you.
Okay. But I've been suggesting that he's actually kept too many trees.
Right, you can't have too many trees.
You need viable trees, uh, not, uh, underbrush that ha- that looks curiously like a tree. So, so, um.
Maybe he just made the landscape plan more formal, I guess.
Like the way you said it. Do I have a motion?
There again, the Board of Commissioners is gonna look at this as well, so you can either have it come back to you, or tweak it, and have the final come back to them, go to them, and you get it in email, whichever you want to do.
Well, I don't really know what kind of a motion to make here, but I, I, I would like to see this go forward with your stipulations.
You were basically approving uh, site design and architectural design, if you so choose.
Okay, then I, I make a move that we, uh, make a motion that we, uh, push forward this with all your stipulations listed here.
We have a motion to approve with the staff's stipulations and addressing the staff's concerns, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second to that motion, uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is none. The application will move forward to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. George, I will get with you on tweaking that, uh, but this will also go to the Board of Commissioners on July twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda is Tri County Crossing Overlay District Review, Bo James Street LLC, owner sixteen seventy-nine MLK Parkway, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two-two-four, located in Land Lot, one nineteen of the second land district. Parcel number two-three-three-zero-three-zero-zero-seven-M, consisting of one-point-three-eight acres. Per section twenty-two oh-six-B, review of site development plans for a proposed restaurant is required.
All right, so as again, uh, this is a bit unique to this board, but it is in a, another overlay from the one you just saw, this is the Tri County Overlay over near Ingalls and Race Track and McDonald's, that area, uh, as again, the zoning's not changing, the use is a permitted use, but you were asked, because it's in the overlay, to review the site design and architectural design, just as you did for the item before you.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
Have a motion to open a public hearing with a, with a second, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is none, we are now in the public hearing.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up for this application this evening?
Do we have an applicant for this petition?
I think we do.
We do?
Is the applicant here?
I make a motion we close public hearing.
I'm sorry.
I said I make a motion we close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to close the public hearing with a second. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. Staff report.
So because this is going to be a Dairy Queen next to the Zaxby's, it's already out there between the Zaxby's and that church, um, this is almost kind of a formality, nevertheless, we gotta do it anyway, because as you know, with the chain restaurants like Zaxby's, uh, there is a certain look, certain color scheme, certain everything they have to follow. A lot of stuff they did comply with, I did make a list of certain things they did not comply with in Tri County Overlay. There again, in Tri County Overlay, a lot of times concerns itself with new businesses and things that are not like chain, nationally-recognized chains, so obviously, there's only so much that can be done with that, because a Dairy Queen, to get successful business, has to look like a Dairy Queen. Nevertheless, with Zaxby's, what happened with that several years ago before my time, there are certain variances they officially, um, had to obtain, uh, based on these standards, not beating these standards and having to be a Zaxby's. So I do recommend that, uh, this Dairy Queen here in this location will have to, you could certainly approve the it's gonna need variances, so I, I think that should be your, your motion. At this point, I don't think you can fully approve the site design or architectural design right now without the variances it will have to go through first.
Okay, when would, would be able to go through those variances?
I'm sorry?
When would you be able to go through those variances for the applicant?
I will... I might be able to get it on the July twenty-fourth agenda, or July twenty-ninth agenda for y'all, I'll have to check.
Thank you, sir.
How much do our wardens have to give up to accept a chain like this? You, you said that there's things that came with, come with it, as far as trademark and all that.
Well, there again, you know, i- if you were doing a, a non-chain or something, you would have to definitely, there's a lot of putting all the parking behind and things of that nature that you would have to. like putting all the parking behind and things of that nature that you would have to do for this. Um, obviously, each chain restaurant or business has a certain template they have to follow. So there's not really a way you can break that except make them officially get variances for it so you can-
I see.
Not show favoritism.
So if it varies, if it varies too far from their code, then we can require variance?
Yes.
Okay.
Officially, that would be the best way of doing it.
Okay.
Would it be appropriate for us to table this then until the July meeting, if you're about to do those variances?
That's up to the sport.
I don't want to hold them up, but I don't want to have a next meeting and then we got some stuff that we got to tweak.
Well, uh, I mean, they can't proceed with construction drawings anyway until the variances are in place, if, if they're approved. So if with them not being standalone variances that would go to Board of Appeals or something, they would go to you anyway. So it would be the same night anyway, so.
What would be your pleasure?
That probably is a, a wise course of action.
Is there Mr. County Attorney, Mr. zoning attorney, uh, is, is there any, uh, input from you in regards to the viability of us, uh, tabling it for it to come back to us for the Tri County overlay and the variances?
It would be at the pleasure of the board. Um, you could approve it in terms of the overlay tonight and then approve the variances in July. Um, however, if, if there is a desire to see what the architecture would be, then you could table and be heard in July or in decide this in July.
Essentially, it would be heard in conjunction in July anyway.
Correct.
With the same board.
I wouldn't have a problem approving the overlay tonight, but what was various is going to have to come in.
That's correct. Put their stipulation in there too, Frank.
Okay.
So do I have a motion from?
Yeah, I move that we, uh, approve the overlay, uh, with the condition that, uh, this be brought back up hopefully, uh, in the July late month meeting.
We have a motion with approval, or approval with stipulations. Do I have a second?
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve with stipulations to apply for the variances to be heard if possible at the next agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. There is no opposition. We will move forward with this petition in a month's time.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda is application twenty-five zero seven S. Denise Rowland, owner forty-five seventeen West McIntosh Road, Griffin, Georgia three zero two two three, located in Land Lot fifty-two of the Fourth Land District, parcel number two six two B zero one zero zero eight, consisting of zero point nine three acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for a general home occupation for an in-home daycare per section five zero three D five.
Staff introduction.
So as stated, this is an in-home daycare in a residence of which she and her mother live in. Uh, this is not one of your commercial daycares that you see on the highway somewhere. This will be in-home license for six children only, I believe the staff report said. Um, she has a fenced-in backyard. She has some activities and things planned, but we'll hear more from her in just a second. So that's my introduction.
Okay. Do we have people to any, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
A motion to open a public hearing. Do I have a second?
We'll second that.
A motion and second to open the public hearing. Are there any speakers?
Madam Chair, no one has signed up for this application.
The applicant.
Voted for a public hearing.
Oops.
You have a motion and a second, but I don't think that's all.
Thank you. I appreciate the correction. All in favor for opening the public hearing? Raise your hand.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate that. No one to speak?
No one does have a applicant here.
We will hear from the applicant. Would you please step to the microphone and give us your name and address, please?
My name is Denise Rowland and I'm at four five one seven West McIntosh Road in Griffin.
And tell us what you've come before us for?
Uh, I plan on, I relocated from Gwinnett County to Spalding County and I had an in-home daycare slash homeschool and I want to start up again doing a in-home daycare. It's a family in-home daycare where I will only be allowed to have six children according to the rules of Bright From Start.
Are there any comments from the staff? Did you have further reports?
Uh, need to close the hearing.
Oh. I'll get this right.
Heard y'all have questions.
A motion made to do, close the public hearing? Moved and second. All in favor, raise your hand. Are there any comments, questions of the applicant?
Uh, no, I didn't.
No questions. Thank you.
Is there a state board that supervises you?
Yes. I will have a representative as soon as I get the zoning letter. Then I put in a, another application to have a new license number approved and they will come out and they will, um, assess everything. They will do from the home for the building that's behind my house, which I will be transitioning in about a year. Um, I'm converting that into the home daycare also. Um, so they will come out and they'll approve. I have to have, um, exit signs. I have to have smoke detectors. I have to have everything approved before I can even start.
What department supervises that?
I don't know yet. I haven't been assigned anybody yet.
I mean, it must be, is it defects or?
It's Bright From Start.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Any comments from the members of the board? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, staff.
Uh, you want me to give the staff report?
Sorry, the staff report.
So staff report was approval on this with the following conditions. Number one, all state requirements from Georgia Department of Early Care and learning Bright From the Start should be followed. Applicant should provide copies of state inspections to the Community Development Department. Number two, an annual county business license is required. And number three, shall not exceed the licensing for six children without further zoning approval from the county.
Thank you. Now do I have a motion? Or any further comments, input from the members of the commission?
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, application twenty-five zero seven S with all the stated stipulations from staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And a second that we, that it be approved with the stipulations from staff. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed. There are no opposition. The petition passes.
Ms. Rowland, this will go out in front of the board of commissioners on July twenty-fourth for a final, um, decision in this same room.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda is application twenty-four zero nine Z, McElroy Rentals LLC, owner twelve seventy-nine Belloy Road, parcel two seven five zero one zero one zero, twenty-eight thirty-three Williamson Road, parcel number two three four zero four zero zero two B, and a portion of two eight three one Williamson Road, parcel two three four zero four zero zero two, located in land lots twenty-two, forty-three, and forty-four of the Second Land District, consisting of approximately twelve point five combined acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from AR one agricultural residential to C one highway commercial for a proposed convenience store with fuel service and future office retail spaces.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So I move.
A second.
Motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I do, yeah, I do.
Oh, you did, the second. Uh, I would like to, as a matter of, of preference, to be able to, uh, extend the time that our petitioners and, and anyone else who would like to speak on the conditions to speak for longer than the standard three minutes or ten minutes given normally.
Be most appropriate.
Yeah.
So.
Were you advocating for thirty minutes per side like we've done in the past for these types of cases or what's your limit?
That, that would be, thirty minutes would be appropriate. It's and, and now the thirty minutes would be divided amongst any of the individuals who speak.
Thirty minutes per side.
Per side.
Pro and con.
So that would need to be stipulated in a, in a parti- in a motion?
Correct. You would need to amend.
Okay. So do I have a, a motion, uh, to allow an extension uh, of the time normally allocated for, for comments?
May I ask a question before? How many people have signed up to sign, uh, to speak?
We have thirteen.
If, if I may, uh, with thirteen, three minutes, uh-
It's thirty-nine.
Yeah, correct. Uh, just keep that in mind.
Okay.
An emotion, a motion and a second to extend the time to allow up to thirty minutes for each side?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Of a motion and a second to extend the time allowing thirty minutes for each side. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. Now, what that means, if you are one of those individuals who has signed up, is that your side gets thirty minutes. And if you want to take it all, then the other twelve people would not have the opportunity to speak. So be aware of that as you, as you take the microphone.
Madam Chairman, you need to designate which side is first.
The applicant will make the application, the applicant will do the presentation first. Is there an applicant here? If you'd step to the microphone and give us your name and your address, please.
I do have a couple of questions. One is that we had, um, sent a PowerPoint. Not really sure how we look at that.
Yes, yes, sir. Uh, Eva has it over there on the flash drive. Pull it up.
Second question, Madam Chair, if I may, is the, um, will there be, if I don't use the entire thirty minutes to speak, do I get rebuttal time?
I would ask the poller in here, is that's correct? Yes, that is correct. But please do speak into the microphone.
Okay.
Get closer, please.
Do I, do I just tell you?
We'll need your name and your address.
Got it.
And then you may proceed.
Members of the Planning Commission, my name is Kirk Felstool, eleven oh five West Peachtree Street, here, uh, uh, with Smith, Gambrill, and Russell on behalf of the applicant, McElroy Rentals LLC, who's both the applicant uh, and the property owner in this case. Um, if you would, uh, go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is the, this is the property and you will see it, uh, Mr. Allen will talk about it. This is at the intersection of Williams Road and Rover's Atella Road. The larger tract, this, this, uh, application is going to be, uh, a smaller tract from, from three larger pieces that are owned by the applicant. The total property size is about eighty-two acres. The application for this rezoning is, is twelve point five acres and it will be divided off and will include the frontage of Rover's Atella and then along, uh, Williamson Road. If you would go to the next line. And just to kind of set where we are, this property is that we are asking to be rezoned is not adjacent to any residential property. The, the closest property is, uh, is going to be over a thousand feet. There, there are other properties, uh, that are about the same distance, but, uh, but it's going to be over a thousand feet from any, uh, residential property. This rezoning is a request from AR one to C one commercial for a, um, convenience store, uh, with some other C one uses, which I'll, I'll show you along with, um, uh, gasoline and diesel sales. If you will go to the next slide. So this is the proposed site plan for this application. It's the current application, uh, which again is twelve point five acres out of that eighty-two acres. Um, and it is the, the total square footage of the building is ten thousand square feet. Five thousand square feet of that will be for, uh, the convenience store. Twenty-five hundred on each side of the convenience store will be for C one uses like restaurants, things like that, um, uses that are allowed. There is also gasoline sales, which you see a canopy towards the front, and diesel sales, you will see, uh, a canopy towards the rear. There are, uh, proposed thirty-seven uh, automobile parking spaces, no truck parking spaces. Uh, and then just so we, we all know that part of the, uh, the discussion certainly that will come up tonight is about the, um, the historic home that is also on the larger tract and you can see that spaced off in red. And just so we are clear, uh, the discussion, uh, this rezoning application is, does not include the historic home. Uh, and so it is, it is not part of this application. If you go to the next slide. The first application, which was much, uh, larger, it was thirty-two point nine acres. Uh, and it included the, the largest, um, additional, uh, construction would have been for, uh, truck parking spaces along with additional car parking spaces. And while that historic property was included in the larger application, there was never an intent to, uh, to tear it down, uh, as has been discussed in the public. But it would have been, uh, to rezone the entire parcel that's shown that thirty-two point nine acres as, um, uh, as C one. So if you go to the next slide, just so we make sure on the comparison, uh, if I've, I've just taken the, the two sort of data charts that are on each of the site plans and put them side by side, uh, and so that you can see the, the comparison. The current application, like I said, is twelve point five acres. The first application was thirty-two point nine acres. Uh, and then the second bo- set of boxes, uh, on the current application, there are proposed thirty-seven automobile parking spaces, no truck parking spaces. The, um, the, um, uh, first application had twenty-seven truck parking places and eighty-nine car parking places. So considerable reduction in the size and scope, uh, of this project. You know, based in large part on the discussions that have been had. Uh, next slide. So this, this is an aerial of the site. And the, I think the point that I want to talk about here is that this, this site is not appropriate any longer as AR one. It is appropriate for C one. And we're going to have some discussion about that. If you see the starred area, that's the, the parcel, including, um, the, the larger tract. If you look at the entire intersection, there is no commercial activity. This property's been vacant and unused for decades. Uh, and it is, and, and I would, if Madam Chair, I would like an instruction that, that the audience be courteous as we're speaking.
Those were my instructions at the beginning of this, of the, of the, and we do ask that you show decorum and respect for these chambers and these activities.
Thank you. And so this intersection, if you look in the upper right-hand corner, uh, y- y- you will see, uh, the zoning map and it shows across the street from us proper, two parcels that are already zoned, C one. So the precedent for C one has already been set. The just as important though, this intersection has been, by G-Di, has been turned into a commercial intersection. There is, if you look at the, if you look at the aerial, you'll see that there's considerable widening in all directions with, um, turn lanes, sidewalks, and, um, and it's been signalized. So this area has been turned into, uh, a commercial inters- uh, a commercial intersection. If you look in the lower right-hand corner, those are the two C one uses. There actually used to be a gas station here which went out of business because of the widening of this, of the G-Di project. So gas stations have also been set as a precedent in this area. So there's no reasonable economic use for the property under the A one and C one is the appropriate use. If you are appropriate zoning. If you go to the next slide. Uh, go to the next slide. So one, there's been some discussion about, uh, in the staff report. A lot of this is addressed, uh, because of the staff report. Um, we are, in terms of the comprehensive plan, we are in an overlay- We are, in terms of the comprehensive plan, we are in an overlay district called community crossroads. There are nine of them. They're really community crossroads intersections. And ours is called Rover, but there's nine of them. C one is the predominant commercial use in every single one of these community crossroads. Except I'll say, I think there's an error in, in the, in the chart on the first one, team on, I think that's actually C one A where, um, and then to the right, you see examples of uses that are similar or as intense as the ones that we are requesting. You see Chevron, Circle K, Dollar, uh, Dollar Generals. You see, um, multiple uses that are similar in these community crossroads. If you go to the next slide. So I want to talk about not all of these community crossroads, but a few of them. The one that is probably the oldest is, is Vaughn Community Crossroad. It, it likely pre-existed the designation as Community Crossroad, but even then, a C one zoning was contemplated. If you go to the next slide. More recently, in the Jackson Community Crossroads, you've got, we put on the chart five, but there's actually seven that are rezoned. Uh, it's the pink, by the way, is C one. There are seven properties that are zoned C one. So there's some discussion about how community crossroads is only appropriate for, for two non-residential uses, but that is not what you're seeing, uh, in the community crossroads, um, that you have adopted and approved. So with Jackson, we've got, like I said, we've got a BP, a Chevron, a Casey's, and a Dollar General, all in the community crossroads. There's also been some discussion in the staff report, uh, that the underlying zoning does, is not consistent with, with C one. But that holds true in each of these community crossroads. If you look at, not each of them, but in several of these that I'll point out. In Jackson Crossroad, which is in Towahliga, for example, uh, C one is not listed as a use. But nevertheless, they're being approved. If you go to the next slide. These are four examples of the nine community crossroads that you have. The fifth one is Jackson that we just looked at. So five out of the nine community crossroads have more than two commercial zoning designations. And several of them are predominantly commercial. I know there are underlying, there are other characteristics of the community, uh, of the comprehensive plan. But in terms of community crossroads, there are, five of the nine have more than two commercial designations, and several of them are, are predominant. Zatella, uh, we've talked about Jackson. Zatella is the one that's up Rover's Atella on, on Newton Highway. That one has five plus C one zonings. If you go to the next. So the other thing that, that I want to make sure that we're, we're, um, addressing is that in some of the conditions that were identified uh, by the staff in terms of architectural characteristics, none of that is happening in any of the other community crossroads. So we've got several examples here, uh, in community crossroads where the same thing's being approved with no architectural standards. Uh, in Jackson, there's an example of a BP. Remember, this is the one where we've got three gas stations and a Dollar General. Go to the next one. Sunny Side's another example, where you've got a gas station, and U-Haul's, um, being operated in the back. Next one. Orchard Hill, no, no, um, architectural standards. Next one. Heron Bay, you've got a large package store there, uh, no architectural standards. And before you go to the next slide, in Heron Bay, Jackson, and Zatella, each one of those has residential properties. They're about half as far away from these uses as in our circumstance. Remember, I told you that we've got about a thousand feet to the closest? These are about four, five, six hundred feet, and we've got no architectural standards, and the uses are being approved. Next slide. Tri-County, again, it's in a community crossroads. I recognize this one's a little different because it's, it's got more, um, commercial in the underlying, um, comprehensive plan, but still no architectural standards. I think the, I'm going to reserve the rest of my time to address, um, whatever issues are raised. But I do want to kind of reiterate that the plan all along, in terms of the historic property, has been to preserve that building. That changed some when the historic property preservation ordinance was drafted. But that's not where we want to end up. We still, the intention, what we'd like to do is to be able to preserve that building. It's not part of this zoning application. Second thing is that, um, this really is an appropriate area for a C one zoning and a reduced size of a, um, convenience store that we've, um, that we've identified. I'll, I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Uh, do we have, uh, that there are seven minutes and fourteen seconds left in this time?
That's the time.
Or that's how much he's used?
Nope, that's the time.
That is, it, it's sixteen minutes left. I'm glad, thank you for clarifying that. I thought we were on the timer. Sixteen minutes left. Okay.
Madam Chair, first up this evening is John Collier. If you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Collier. I'm at three fifty-nine Rawls Road. I'm about a football field away from this, uh, establishment, or proposed establishment. Uh, number one, what's going to happen to the other sixty-eight acres? Okay, as soon as you zone those twelve, you have a foot in the door to do whatever you want. Okay? Number two, who's paying for all the infrastructure changes that are going to be happening? There's no, I am in the trucking industry. There is no way you're going to get an eighteen-wheeler into that establishment with that intersection that you have right now. No way. I drive one. It's not going to happen. Number two, the only way to make all this happen is to have a, a roundabout. Two million dollars. Is that going to fall on the back of the taxpayers? Okay? All this infrastructure, it has to happen. Who's going to pay for it? And what are y'all bringing to the table outside of a convenience store? Where I come from, when you build something, you bring something. And I haven't heard anything yet on what you're bringing that's going to bring, a, a, bring asset to our community. Because our community right now is the way we want it. Every morning at seven o'clock, I see some of my neighbors in here, every morning at seven o'clock, there's about fifteen, sixteen geese to fly over every single morning in the direction of this truck stop. Every afternoon, seven o'clock, same thing happens. When you add lights to geese, what happens? They turn another direction. I'm not a hunter, but I do know that much. When you add lights and all that noise to the environment that they're not used to, the farm across the road's going to lose all their geese. Every single one of them. They will find another place to land. Next.
Thank you.
Chase Alexander.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name's Chase Alexander. My family and I live at twenty-five Rover Road. And we're likely the newest residents represented in this room tonight. After a long career in the Marine Corps, including multiple combat deployments, receiving the Purple Heart Medal, and other combinations for valor, my family and I needed a change. We were searching for peace. We wanted to leave behind the noise, traffic, and chaos of city life. We dreamed of a place with land, a farmhouse where we could raise our children, with the values we hold dear. Values that seem to be fading by the society today. Southern part of Spalding County was exactly what we were looking for. Rural, agricultural, and serene. Yet still close enough for family visits, gymnastics practice, and my daughter's shopping trips. Before I made the move, I carefully studied land use plans and zoning ordinances to ensure my wife's dream of raising a Jersey cow, chickens, and horses would be unobstructed. We wanted a place where we felt safe, a place where neighbors still know each other. A lot of them are in this room tonight. Truthfully, if the property in question tonight would have been available on the market when we were looking to buy a home, I would have bought it. Not to change what the area is, but to preserve it and restore it to its original purpose. To allow the land to be converted into a commercial zone, a concrete, noisy, disruptive development, would push away families like mine. Families looking for a place to plant roots, raise children with peace and purpose. My family doesn't want this. Our community certainly doesn't need it. And I truly believe approving this plan would be the beginning of the end for what makes this area special. If I were in your position, I would want to be remembered for starting that decline. In closing, I want to offer this thought. This area is more than just a location. It's a feeling. It's a feeling of driving by pastures, seeing newborn calves while my kids moo out the window. It's watching farmers' fields turn, turn golden with whispering hay. It's long fences and longer front porches. It's family gatherings and scary nights. Places like this are becoming pretty rare. They're being replaced by soulless concrete jungles that benefit the few at the cost of the many. Especially our children. Who may never know what this feeling is if we let it slip away. So I ask, my family asks, I'm sure everyone in this room asks, to please don't take that feeling from them. Thank you.
Please, no demonstrations, no interruptions. Thank you. Next.
Gail Stevenson.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Gail Stevenson. I've lived on Moreland Road for eleven years, and I too moved there for exactly what he just described. I would first like to voice my concern with the timing of this meeting. As you know, this application has been withdrawn twice. Residents attended a McElroy Town Hall meeting in October to hear their plans, and nothing in that meeting changed our opposition. After waiting for eight months, here we are again in June with fifteen days' notice prior to tonight's meeting, when so many of our residents are on vacation with school just letting out. I have read the staff report and their recommendations in detail. I appreciate all the work that they went into in making this assessment, and I agree with their conclusions. We could simply let their report stand without comment. However, it is essential that the residents' concerns be on record. Therefore, my permitted responses, my limited time, to McElroy's application are as follows. Number one, McElroy contends that there are no active commercial uses at this intersection. There are actually two commercial properties here. One of them is currently operating a business, and the other one has permits in place. The property was purchased, the permits are in place to build a new convenience store that will replace the one that was previously closed. This new building, yes, it's previous, it's, right now it's boarded. But they're going to be, beginning their building, and a new, more compatible convenience store with gas pumps is going to open within the year that will be more compatible and conducive to our community, what we want. Number two, the proposed development is simply not needed. There are at least eight other options for these services by businesses that are already operating in the area. Why take business away from them and force development on residents who don't want it or need it? Number three, the size of this development is simply too large for our rural community. It looks more like the racetrack stations that are on nineteen forty-one. What the state may do on Vaughn Road in two to ten years is not our reality today. We know their plans will be in phases, and there is no realistic timetable for when changes may or may not extend to Highway three sixty-two. Today, the size of this development is simply not appropriate for a state highway that is a two-lane highway through a rural community, not a four-lane commercial zone. Number four, McElroy's list of nine community crossroads in Spalding County, what that list was, was a very good example of what we do not want in our rural community. We don't want to see that kind of development. The time does not permit me to go across them and talk about each one of them, so please just know we don't want to be a commercial highway. And number five, time does not permit me to respond to the misinformation in McElroy's Section Two description of known public opposition comments. These comments are related to the original plan that was submitted last spring and the meeting that we attended in August. They are not up to date with the current plan in our opposition. So I and all of the people here that represent our res, our community, we respectfully request that you protect our quality of life in this rural area and deny this rezoning request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're taking away time. We need to be doing the business here, so we appreciate it if you would not applaud at the end of each comment.
Brandy Baird.
I'm sorry. Hi, you're Brandy Baird, one thirty-five Bethany Road. Um, I just really want to just ditto everything my neighbors have said. Um, and because I think we all feel that same way. Um, I'm a little closer than Mr. Collier. But just to add to that, we have a cattle farm, and I know in there, what they submitted, they said there's no agriculture that will be, um, affected by this. But we, we literally have a cattle farm right there, but instead of football field away. So it will be affected. On top of that, it will be all of our lives, not just everyone in here dressed in black, as we all, and others too. It's going to be our children and everybody else's lives impacted by this. My question to you is, why overdevelop everything in Spalding County? Look at the list of things you have on your agenda. Everything is about development, development, commercial, commercial. It's somewhere we have to live. Like somewhere we bought our homes to raise our kids in this country lifestyle. Um, the other thing I want to add is the picture he had for the entrances and everything. It's so dangerous. And if you go back and look at previous where G-DOT did their, um, traffic surveys, they actually set, cited that intersection as number five with the most accidents in Spalding County. So with that being five, and then adding this commercial there, it's going to be worse. And guess what? Guess who's going to be affected by that? Me, my neighbors, our children, going back and forth to school. Uh, you have, you have to think about who is actually going to be affected instead of lining his pockets. Thank you.
Yolanda Joan Johnson, Yolanda Johnson.
Hey, Yolanda Johnson, one twenty-four Wilder Way. Um, I'm, I stand in opposition with my neighbors as well. Changing this property to commercial zoning would significantly alter the character of our neighborhood. This area is a residential community, and the introduction of this particular commercial property would undermine the sense of safety and comfort that we residents have enjoyed. Residential neighborhoods rely on quiet, peaceful surroundings, and this development would disrupt the balance with increased noise, traffic, and activity. The community crossroad provision calls for low-density development if there is a need in the area. Not five minutes away, in all four locations, there are gas stations, three grocery stores, Dollar Generals, a medical minute clinic, fast food restaurants, and now we have a large amount. With all those things close to us, there isn't a need for anything else. There are already two properties in the same area, zone is C one. One property, Georgia Jam, has been operational for a while, and then the other property, the old Maryburg Gas Station, will be opening up at some point this year. And that's more of a neighborhood gas station and better for our community, although we do not need anything else out there. I want y'all to think about this, too. The race- The racetrack down by Ingalls has 16 regular pumps, a three-pump canopy for diesel, and it's only sitting on 8.39 acres. McElroy wants the same amount of pumps, canopy for diesel for contractor vehicles and semi-trucks, 10,000 square feet for a convenience store with two lease spaces, and 37 standard parking spaces for 12 and a half acres. That's bigger than the racetrack out there by Ingalls. That's it.
Stacy Donaldson?
My name is Stacy Donaldson, I live at 1058 Moreland Road in Spalding County. I'd first like to thank all of you on the Planning and Zoning Board who give your time for the betterment of our county. I'm a Spalding County native, I was born and raised in Griffin, graduated from Griffin High, went off to college and moved back to my hometown. I own a real estate brokerage in Heritage Realty that's located in Spalding County on Solomon Street. We've been open since 2003. I take pride in being a Griffonite, and Griffinism is my home. I love Spalding County and the district that I live in. A lot of the people in this room are my neighbors and distant neighbors. The majority of us live in close proximity to the proposed project and feel that this project will negatively affect our way of life. This is a rural area of Spalding County. In my professional opinion, I feel that the property values of the resident properties would decrease with this project due to the desirability of rural living being impeded. People don't purchase in rural areas of a county because they're wanting the convenience of a gas station. We live out in the county to get away from the traffic, the noise, and the congestion of a city. The majority of the parcels around this project are Zone R3, A5, and V5 conservation use. This is not a commercial zoned area. These surrounding properties are people's homes where they realize the American dream of homeownership, and they should not have to worry about the integrity of their property in the area where they live, nor should they have to worry about the safety of their family and kids. The property owners pay hard-earned taxes for the houses and the land that they chose to purchase in a rural area, and they would like to keep it rural. It was evident to me at the last commissioners' meeting where strangers came together for the sake of their community, the time and effort that everyone has put into fighting this project is incredible. At a time when people are the most divided in this country, it gives me great pride and comfort in my heart to know all is not lost in our community. I'm proud to be surrounded by and living around this amazing group of people. All we want to do is protect the integrity of living, to maintain the rural aesthetics, appeal of why we chose to live where we do, keep Griffin great and growing in the right direction for Spalding County and for its citizens and homeowners and their future. Being in the real estate business, I know, like, and respect Deion Eric McElroy, however, I do not think this is the right project for this area, and I'm against the proposed plan. Thank you all again for your time.
Thank you.
Thomas Boyd.
My name's Thomas Boyd, I live at 128 Wilder Way, and my house is actually pictured on that aerial view. That's how close my kids will be playing to a truck stop. Now, we moved out there so my kids will have a safe place to play with the neighborhood kids, and we have a hard enough time right now keeping traffic down so my kids don't get run over. Now, you add tractor-trailers coming in and out of there, which we don't have right now. The biggest thing we have is dump trucks going to the quarry. We don't have tractor-trailers running up and down Rover, up and down 362 all day. So adding this truck stop or this gas station with diesel pumps is going to invite a negative element into the area that's going to make it unsafe for my family to remain in this area. So all you're going to do is you're going to run away law-abiding, taxpaying citizens from the county, because if I wanted to live next to Walmart, that's where I would have bought a house. And the comparison of the gas stations and these crossroads are all on major high-traffic highways, not 362. So you can't compare 1941 up on Sunnyside to 362 just outside of Wilkes. It's not a fair comparison. So, that's all I have to say.
I'm Diane Kalina, and I live at 13 Rover Road, and I, along with most of my neighbors, oppose having this area rezoned for any type of commercial property. This is a rural area, it's residential, it's agricultural, and we would like it to stay that way. There's no sewage lines on that property in that area. That means it would have to be a septic tank, you know, that's going to cause environmental risk to the surrounding area. There's gas stations and convenience stores three miles pretty much each way, there's no need for this. They've recently built the gas station at Rover's Zatella that was pictured with two retail spaces that still stand without tendons. They're getting, we're talking about 80 acres, right now we're talking about 12 and a half, but if 12 and a half get rezoned to commercial, the other property will be right behind it, and we don't want that. It's a rural area, it's agricultural, it's residential. People move to this area because they enjoy that lifestyle, and if it does change, people are going to end up selling their homes or renting their homes, and the whole area is just going to be not what we moved there for. I just hope that our elected commissioners will listen to the voices of the people and represent us and not approve the rezoning of this area.
Thank you.
Althea Nance? Oh, sorry, please forgive me. Thank you. Yes, sir. Take your time.
My name is Buddy Wilson, I live at 1313 Moreland Road, and I was a State Patrol here for a little over 30 years, and I know what that traffic would mean for us, because we live right now, and them dump trucks is running down through there, they shouldn't be down there, and they're not supposed to be there, but if you want it in your front yard, then somebody else moved down there, so some of y'all moved down there, because we don't want it in our front yard. It wasn't there when we moved there. So, we just don't want it, and we know what if the truck stop brought up there, what it would bring to us, and we just can't stand it. And with the experience that I've had, I know what it would bring. And I've tried to get the troopers to come out there and work traffic on that road two times. They say, "Yeah, we'll be right out there, we'll be right out there." And one of them has been over a year ago, and the last one's been over three months ago, and they've been the first one to come out there. Somebody is stopping them, I don't know who it is, but something is stopping them from coming out there, because they keep telling me, "I'll be there, I'll be there." So, thank you for our time. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm Althea Nance, and I own property right down the road from where they're trying to... I have about 50 acres, I have a pecan orchard, and I have so many things that are special to me in this area. I went to Marybrook's store, I grew up there, and it's disappointing to all of us that they want to undo the peace and joy that we have. I will say that where you want to build, that intersection is very dangerous. There've been a lot of accidents there, and I think it was mainly speed, which we have no control over. But I will say that we have a church in this area too, we have a good church, and we have a lot of people that are dismissed and going to different areas, and they need the safety of the roads too. And I would appreciate it if we would reevaluate the things that are planned to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Matthew, and I reside at 29 Cato Street. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors as well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, would you give us your full name?
Matthew Smithson.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm here tonight to oppose the proposed commercial rezoning of the land at Rover's Zatella and Highway 62 intended for a fuel station. This specific piece of land is currently nestled between established low-density residential homes and active agricultural land. The introduction of commercial fuel station here would be a disruption to our community's character, safety, and overall quality of life. One of our primary concerns is this development would attract large trucks. We already experienced road damage and accelerated wear and tear from quarry trucks utilizing our roads, this damage is ultimately paid for by our tax dollars. Adding a constant stream of commercial trucks will only exacerbate this, leading to more frequent and more costly road maintenance of our community. One of my questions is, will this intersection be completely rebuilt or significantly widened and additionally signalized for safety? For this new development, without a comprehensive overhaul, this intersection will be guaranteed to become a logistical nightmare, leading to significant congestion, increased commute times for residents, and critically heightened risk of serious accidents. If against our, well, yeah, if against our wishes and clear desires of this community this development were to proceed, I would strongly request that an enforceable expectation be placed on developer to provide and maintain landscaping and natural foliage. This is an unfortunate example on Highway 16 where a new gas station was built with no sod, no trees, no landscaping whatsoever, leaving an unsightable sprawling concrete expanse that distracts from the area. In stark contrast, in Fayetteville where I work, new development are consistently required to incorporate significant beautification efforts, including trees, shrubs, green spaces, creating much more aesthetically pleasing environments, we deserve the same consideration. Also, we're worried that this may attract more development, like fast food restaurants, which would increase traffic and litter, motels, which would increase transient populations, additional convenience stores, auto and large truck repair shops. All of this we do not want. These types of developments would erode the peaceful residential and agriculture integrity of our community, changing the character of our neighborhood. We, the citizens of this area, do not want this. Thank you.
Thank you. Three minutes, you have three minutes remaining, and there's one more speaker after you.
I'll be brief, I promise. Greg Burns, 5451 West McIntosh Road. I live in this area, I go through it frequently, as my daughter lives in Zebulon. That intersection and the vistas there are some of the most beautiful in the county. It's rural, as you've heard, there's agriculture, last agriculture, and as a fellow cattle owner, I am here to look out for my fellow cow owners. So I just want to focus on one thing to make it easy, and that's the criteria that are required for a rezoning application. I just want to focus on one, which is the proposed rezoning permit is a use that's suitable in view of the use of adjacent property. You've heard from everyone here that it is not. I do want to address a comment about the community crossroads. I think what you heard from the applicant's side grossly misrepresents what a community crossroads is. I was at those comprehensive plan meetings, and the idea is a community crossroads is what the community in that area wants. You've heard what they don't want. I think what most people wanted was something like a shop, a cafe, something where people gather, and that was the intent of a community crossroads. Gas stations, convenience store, that's get in, get out, that's not what that was about. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keenan Lowndy, I live at 943 Moreland Road. Thank you for all the neighbors that showed up this evening. 943 Moreland Road is at the intersection of Lakeside. It's less than a mile from their new development opportunity they have here tonight, and I want to speak on the fact that any throughway traffic is going to come straight down Moreland, past Moreland Elementary School. That's going to be their shortcut to get back to 1941. They are not going to take 362 all the way down. So with the added volume of this new development that's being proposed, we must take that in consideration. I have an eight-year-old, I stay on a corner. This is not going to be appropriate at all for this environment. I would also like to paint the picture that the approximate acreage for Walmart in this area, a Walmart, is less than 20 acres. A Walmart being set right there, we have no control if you guys give this commercial opportunity to these individuals. A Walmart sits on less than 20 acres. The owners of this new development have way more than 20 acres. We stand totally against any further development and trying to push this commercial development forward. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm sure that's all who's...
That concludes our public, I'm sorry, if you did not register to speak, you're not a... If you...
I'm two houses down from this development.
I thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. This will be the remaining time for the applicant?
Will we at least take a show of hands of who's in opposition, since not everybody spoke?
Not at this time, we appreciate it very much, but we will hear now for the remainder of the time for the applicant.
I would chair, I'd let him.
Just come on down?
Yeah.
Oh, not to.
You have 16 minutes remaining in your time.
If you could go to the second slide. Go to the beginning, and then click down one right there. Yeah, actually, go to the next one. So, you know, some of what I'm going to say may not be very popular, but it's just the truth. The character of this area is changing. You heard the opposition themselves talk about traffic increasing. That has happened. You heard in the beginning of the discussion about how this intersection has been turned into a commercial intersection, in part because of the traffic in the area. We all know that up Rover's Zatella, about halfway to Noonan Road, there's a Vulcan Quarry, I think it's a Florida Rock Quarry. That has happened. And up on Noonan Road, another one of these community crossroads, the property is being rezoned so that we have five commercial properties at this point. The character of the area is changing. If you would go, click down one, click another one, click another one, click another one. One more, one more. There we go. There's been a discussion about what the community crossroads represents. I'm showing you what is actually happening in this chart, and I agree that some of these areas, like Tri-County, it's really not an appropriate comparison, but it is a community crossroads. But fair comparisons are Jackson, where there are seven commercial zonings, three gas stations, and a Dollar General. That is what is in a character area overlay community crossroads. Same thing is with Zatella, which is just a short distance from here. So the way that we are considering our community crossroads is showing this result. Those may not be things that... Though, those may not be things that we are comfortable addressing, but it is the reality. The, um, and that is what is in your comprehensive plan. If you would go, and I'm sorry to skip back, I want to address some of the main issues. If you would, um, go, again, go back to the beginning. And then advance one other direction. Uh, one more. This is the twelve-point-five acres. There is a comment about how this is as, as large as some of the other comparisons. That, one, one of the main reasons that this is larger is because we have a septic field. Uh, but you can see a lot of the area that is as green space. So it is large, it's not going to be, there is not going to be a Walmart in this area. This is a convenience store with gasoline sale and diesel. The comment that was made about all the semi-trucks and new traffic, it's not something that is, is going to happen. They, you, you see it yourself up at the Ingles where there is a separate, um, canopy for diesel sales. Those are largely, uh, the contractor's trucks. Yes, there will be semi-trucks, but, but the bulk of those sales is going to go towards contractor's trucks. There's not going to be additional traffic caused by this use, because this is pass-by traffic. You heard for yourself.
Excuse me. I seriously need you to show decorum in this, in these chambers. And if you're unable to do that, we may ask you to leave. So I need no more mumbling, no more interruptions. Show the same decorum and respect that you expected when you had your own representative speaking. And let's move on. We have other items on this agenda that we need to take care of. And we need to show the proper respect for each other and for yourselves as we move on. You may continue.
Thank you. The, the, as, as the audience has already pointed out, there, there are other fueling locations for the semi-trucks. They're not going to come here for this use. Contractor's trucks, they will be pass-by trips. So you're not going to see a large increase in traffic resulting from this use. They're going to be, they're going to be folks who are passing by anyway, because there are other destinations, uh, there are other destinations in the area. There was a comment made about what happens to the infrastructure. This is ultimately a project that is approved by GDOT. It's going to be subject to their permitting. We're going to have to work with them on whatever the, the access is that they require. Um, and so to address the comment about whether or not, um, you know, what sort of infrastructure, it'd be what GDOT tells us to do. I think a, a couple of other, again, generalized comments about property values going down. Again, not something people want to hear, but that is a subjective statement. The objective evidence will almost always be that when you have new development, the property values are going to go up. Folks don't want to hear it, but it is, um, but it is the, um, the reality of the, of the statistics. And, um, I, I will, the, another comment that was made, again, which is, um, which is not, uh, which is not accurate, is that this is not a truck stop. You can, you can follow a definition, or you can look at the reality of it. The definition by the Department of Community Affairs specifically says this is a convenience store. If you have diesel fuel sales, but the primary service is to the traveling public, it's not a truck stop. And it's not a truck stop. There's not even parking for trucks. So it is a convenience store with gasoline sales and diesel sales. That's what it is, not a truck stop. I will, I will leave you with this, and that is that, uh, this intersection, uh, the, the die has been cast a long time ago, that this is becoming a commercial intersection. It will also, the die is also cast that property as, this is no longer suitable as a R1 property. There's not a reasonable economic use under the current zoning. It needs to be rezoned. This is the zoning classification that is predominant in the community crossroads. Uh, and it's similar to the uses in the community crossroads. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I saw you move the clause on the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. Oppose, there is no opposition. The public hearing is now closed. We have a staff report?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Uh, so if you'll indulge me for a few minutes, I think it's really important to talk about the community crossroads standards that are in our comp plan. First of all, I understand the applicant bringing up the, uh, different intersections out there. Some of them are not that great a comparisons. This intersection here is very rural. It also has a definite rural historic character to it. It is definitely not like the other intersections there. I strongly disagree that the die is cast for this property. Uh, that's why we have this meeting here today to have control over this, as well as the Board of Commissioners meeting. Die is not cast for this property. You can't say just because the other ones have five commercial parcels around it that, and this one has two already, we just need to go ahead and do it for this one, too. That's not what you have to do. There are standards here that you can follow to not do that if you wish. So let me go over this real quick, um, and indulge me for a few months here, because this is important. The vision statement of our comprehensive plan, and our comprehensive plan is a very important tool we use for this body. I think since I've been here, we use it in our, every decision-making process and every application we've used, so it's an important tool. This is the vision statement of the current comp plan. Spalding County will be a county of choice thanks to well-timed targeted growth for housing and jobs, new services and amenities for enhancing our livability and vibrancy, and protection of the environmental, historic, and rural charm that make our community unique. Let me say that again. Protection of environmental, historic, rural charm that make our community unique. So that's the vision statement. Now on to the community crossroads themselves. Yes, there are more community crossroads that are developed than other ones. Certainly, this is one of the least developed. I think it's the second-to-last developed of the community crossroads. If you were to take away that asterisk on the plan that says this is a community crossroad, you see there, right there was Rover. Any commercial zoning along this area would really be considered spot zoning. If you didn't have the asterisk there saying, hey, we want a somewhat of a commercial crossroads here. So you take the asterisk away, it's spot zoning, if they tried this without the crossroads designation there. But what it does with the crossroads is it says, okay, some commercial, let's not have it to the extent where it's pretty much spot zoning, is within reason. So that's the design to do that with the community crossroads. There's, I will read out the standards for the community crossroads, in case there's confusion about this. Community crossroads are intersections where commercial uses can be introduced to provide needed services in areas that are primarily residential. Okay? At these sites, up to two contiguous parcels around the intersection may be developed at a low density and scale similar to the surrounding development. So we got several criteria there. Needed services, two contiguous parcels, max, and a low density and scale. Uh, so there are already two commercial par- parcels at this intersection, in the pink on the map there. Contrary to popular belief, these are not dilapidated, uh, properties and buildings waiting to be demolished. The one there is the Georgia Jams and Jellies, which is an active business at that property. Still, I received from this last week or this week from a Mr. Doreedia for the twenty-nine twenty-eight Williamson Road, a, the old gas station that was there, with a very serious inquiry about getting variances and other approvals to reinstate the gas station there. So you have a scenario where you have one active business at twenty-nine twenty-four. You very possibly may have one again at twenty-nine twenty-eight. There's two parcels already out there. If this is approved, now you got three, possibly four. So that's not the intent of the crossroads. That's not the intent of the scale and size of the parcels around the crossroads. Provide needed services. Convenience store, gas station typically provides fuel, snack, foods and beverages, small household items, sometimes alcohol. For the pictures below, there's already an abundance of convenience stores, fuel pumps, and retail stores within several miles of the subject properties. Uh, if you go to the, um, Rover's Zatella Highway sixteen, uh, intersection they're talking about, you have a brand-new DG Market Grocery Store, has a freezer section, the whole, it's essentially at a mini grocery store there. Across the street from that, you have a new gas convenience store with future retail suites, um, just opened up. Um, in the city of Williamson, about three miles away, you have gas convenience store, restaurants, and retail suites, Dollar General. Um, to the south there, across the street from the, what I just mentioned in Williamson, you have a Dollar General store. Um, to the north, about two miles, you have another Dollar General store. You also have a grocery store called Williamson Grocery, and various retail. Then right next to that, you have Loma Hold, another gas and convenience store. So at some point, the board needs to assess whether this is truly a needed service at the subject property or just a duplication of services already provided several times already nearby. Comprehensive plans use to protect the quality of life of Spalding citizens and encourage their input into the plan. At the August meeting they had where it was withdrawn the first time, there was a thirty-to-one margin against it. They have less than that tonight, but nevertheless, there's been a lot of opposition. The board also needs to assess whether the necessity of the service proposed outweighs the importance of rural charm promoted in the rural neighborhood com- character area. Once rural character is removed, it is not returned. This community crossroads also boasts a rare bit of historic charm, a historic farmhouse, and a national register of historic places on the adjacent property. Up to two contiguous parcels, this is very plain. You have one, two contiguous parcels on here. Rezoning this, even the lots are combined together, makes a third. Uh, as I've just said, these two parcels, one already has an active use, one very well, very well may have another active use in the future. So we've got to take that in consideration. You were basically, with simple math, exceeding the two commercial parcel standard in this code. Um, let's see here. At a low density and scale similar to ground, surrounding development, it will not be, if this is approved and if the other parcel comes back to being rehabilitated, you will have a pretty large, the medium-density, uh, commercial development around that intersection. The die is not cast on this, that you don't have to do this, you don't have to throw up your hands and say, oh, well, it's just going to happen. You have it in your control, based on your comp plan and zoning code, to do something about this, preserve this particular intersection.
Thank you. Did we have a motion to close the public hearing?
You did.
We did. Commissioners, do you have comments, questions?
Yeah, my first comment is I am so enthused by seeing as many people out here as we have this evening. I came on this board in nineteen eighty-nine, when they were having difficulties getting people to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. A good friend of mine, Kenneth Presley, was a surveyor. And, uh, he said, you ought to try out for that. And I said, mm, I got better things to do. I've been on here since then. A lot of the, uh, development that has been mentioned tonight as, uh, a reason that this should go forward is stuff that probably should not have happened. Uh, this is, to me, like letting your child do something that they shouldn't do because everybody else in the neighborhood is doing it. I don't think that this is an inappropriate place for this current zoning. Uh, I grew up in the country, I live kind of in the country right now. Uh, if I had this growing up in front of my house, I'd be out there raising hell and, just like y'all have done. You've done it in a nice way. That's basically the start of how I feel about this.
Thank you.
And, and by the way, if y'all are anything, if you've got some grouping together, we got more problems in Spalding County than just this. And seriously, y'all ought to stay in touch. See you, David.
Are there any further comments? On this issue? Then I am going to ask, do we have a motion?
I would move to deny the application.
There's a motion to deny the application. Do I have a second? I will second the, uh, the motion to deny. All in favor of the dial, please raise your right hand. All opposed? The application is recommended to denial to the Board of Commissioners.
This will go likewise as the rest of them tonight to the Board of Commissioners on July twenty-fourth, six p.m., in the same room.
Madam Chair, the application...
I'm sorry. We will take a five-minute break in our time to allow those of you who in the audience would like to leave. Please do so as quickly as possible.
Oh, really?
That's where I live, and that's what I wanted to say, but I was, couldn't get down, but I'm saying, my house is in eighteen seventy.
Yeah. And, and here's the thing about it. You're dealing with people who've got so much money, they can give a Lex ass about anybody, all you all like them. Thanks, you're so good person. I worked in, I've, I've been no longer than Kyle's ass. I, I went, yeah, I worked there, I worked right for George. Uh, I got my broker's license in nineteen, I got my salesman's license in sixty-four. And then got my broker's about two days, two, two years later, I felt like two days. I got, yeah. Sure, well, we need more of that. I got more than I need right there, although right now I've got phones that are about that tall.
If I could please ask you to continue to leave the room quietly? Would you please continue to exit quietly so that we may continue with the agenda? Those of you who are still remaining, we ask you to go ahead and exit as quickly and quietly as you can. We thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda is application twenty-five zero-six S. Malia Home Passon. Owner thirteen fifteen Manly Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two-three, located in land lot thirty-nine of the third land district. Parcel number two-five-nine zero-two-one-six N, consisting of twenty-eight acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for expansion of an approved religious worship center at four ninety-eight Steel Road per section five zero-three B-one.
Now, I want to remind the audience that this is a public hearing. This item is not intended to be a theological discussion or to be treated in any other way as any other case that is brought before us. And having had said that, I would take, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm moved.
I have a motion to o- open the public hearing. I have a second.
I have a second.
And seconded, we will now move to the public hearing. A vote, may I have a vote? All in favor, raise your hand, thank you. All opposed? No opposition, the public hearing is now open.
Madam Chair, we have, um, seven people, sorry, please forgive me, yes, seven people who have signed up this evening.
Okay, we, we have an applicant represented here? Okay, we'll hear from the applicant first, thank you.
Uh, I'm Wendy Crady, eighteen twenty-two Dorman Avenue, Brookhaven, three oh three one nine. I am with the firm of Gregory Doyle Calhoun and Rogers, and I'm working today with the temple. What Pramaha Jagakha is the actual applicant in this case. I do have with me a couple representatives of the temple. They are not necessarily going to speak, but I just want you to know who they're here, who is here, so if you have any specific questions. So I have, um, I have Edward Allen. He is our civil engineer for the project. We have, um, Abbott Passan, who is the head priest, and we have a interpreter as well. We also have Franklin Ly, who is the, um, secretary. And so if they weren't able to sign the sign-up sheet, they will certainly say their names and address when they come up.
I'm sorry.
Would you be able to bring up the, um, PowerPoint?
No, let me make it clear-
Oh, sure.
That, uh, you're speaking in, in reference to people who have signed up either for or against, must sign in advance.
Yes.
So if they did not sign-
If they came in after the sign-up sheet was taken?
That's correct.
They're not able to speak?
No.
Okay.
But you may speak for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, two, two of them are on the sign-up sheet? Okay, great.
Good.
Good. Um, we do have some pictures we just wanted to show.
Eva, it should be at the bottom of the presentation, I believe.
So currently, the temple is at four eight nine Steel Road. They've been there since two thousand twelve. It's seventeen acres right there. Since that time, uh, the head priest has been able to purchase what we call is the William Swett property. It's at thirteen fifteen Manly Drive, that is twenty-eight acres. Um, the temple is looking to, um, increase its size and expand its current campus. There we go, if you can go up one. So just give you a look, when you look at the overhead where it is, um, this area that's outlined is the additional, what is the Swett, uh, property. And the square area over to the right is the current, um, development that, that is there right now. Go up. This is the site, this is the site plan. Um, again, over on the left side is basically what is there now. And over on the right side, what is going to be added? There are two primary things that are going to be added. Can you go ahead, move up? This is just a close-up. Okay, the first, uh, is a worship hall. It's going to be six thousand four hundred square feet. It's going to be located basically in the center of the property. Um, if you can go up. So the worship center is going to be the same, uh, scheme, paint colors, similar materials and similar roofing material as to what's there already. The goal is to have all the buildings and structures, uh, work together and have the same look. This is the inside of what the worship center looks like. It's not something that's divided up into individual rooms. It's actually one big, like, worship sanctuary. Um, also on the property, they will be building basically a picnic center, an outdoor patio. And this is, uh, basically what the look is going to be for that. Um, this is the property right here. This is kind of, um, looking to the left of the current house that is right there, Mr. Swett's former house. And you can keep going. Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I saw on the, what you provided.
Okay. Um, just a note, if you, that's good, if you could just leave it on that screen of the close-up. So the other thing that will be done is the home that is currently there is going to remain. It is, uh, seventeen hundred sixty-seven square feet. There's going to be an addition gone, uh, added to the side and back of it to make it two thousand three hundred and seventeen feet. And that's to add, uh, restrooms for the property that, the sanctuary, traditionally sanctuaries do not have restrooms within the building. Um, it's important to know that there are two retention ponds planned for the property. The parking lots are gravel lots. And, um, if you can go down, just the larger picture. Yeah. Up at the northern end of the property is a creek setback. That part, area all the north there will remain undeveloped. It isn't a creek setback. Then down on the south end, there's another creek and a sea, uh, setback and, and flood area. And that area too will remain, uh, undeveloped. We have just a couple minutes. I was just gonna ask, um, oh, I can't, sorry. I think that's it. I am going to reserve time if, uh, we need to address any issues that people bring up.
Thank you. There, we, we will, uh, you know, you have three minutes remaining in your time. When it, when, we have three minutes remaining in your time, when you get to the point. Just wanted to let you know how long, okay? All right?
Teresa Lynch?
I'm Teresa Lynch. I live at thirty-six Spraberry Road in Noonan, Georgia. I've known this area for quite a while, since a high school marching band competition. And then in the eighties and nineties, I spent a lot of time with Vai Delta Kappa International and met in the meeting place was Griffin High School. I've had a chance to meet many people in the area and visit the schools. About fifteen years ago, I was invited to, to visit the local temple, Buddhist temple, which had been explained to me as a place to, as a way of life and that complements all religions. I continue learning and practicing that skills that I lead, feel lead me to be a better person. Under the guidance of the Master Monk, the Temple on Steel Road has evolved over two, approaching two decades into a peaceful educational and spiritual center. He remains focused on teaching practices that promote self-improvement. This promotes peaceful, harmonious actions and builds trust among all people as we interact and engage with each other. All physical improvements and additions at the temple have been planned with these goals in mind. Many monks and laypeople from across the country and international come to study and learn. The local tem- temple is recognized and respected for its values and leadership. The temple does not exist in a closed environment within the confines of the property boundaries on Steel Road. The Buddhist community regularly engages with the local economy. Grocery supplies, repairs, maintenance needs, professionals, veterinarians, medical care, eyeglasses, eye, eye care, maintenance, car maintenance, restaurants and motels. We do not feel isolated in that community. We are proud to be part of this greater community. I appreciate being given this time to address you and humbly ask for your support for the proposed plans and facilities for the temple. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Edward Allen? Tracy McDonald?
My name is Tracy McDonald. I live at thirteen twenty-two Manly Road. I am right across from the opposed, um, temple that will be built. Um, I'm kind of like the other people, this is, you know, I have nothing about who anybody worships. I do, I do not care. Um, I've never been prejudiced about anything, my, my family grew me up that way. But anyway, um, it's about the traffic that will be coming. It's the site of the temple, uh, because of, we have farmhouses. We have our cows, we have our horses, we have our, um, fish ponds and all of that. And I think it's going to bring in more, uh, traffic, more pollution. Um, and I, you know, there's, there's commercial properties that the temple could probably sit at and be, it look good, but in our area, it is rural, is agricultural, and, um, so I'm here to oppose that. I do have three letters from the surrounding folks that live out there with us. Um, and I didn't know if I could read them, or y'all can have them to look at over-
You'll give it to me, I'll enter them into the record.
Okay. Um, but I just, I would like to say that, um, I'm kind of like the other folks. We want to keep it agricultural, rural, um, and it's, it's going to be right across from my, my farmhouse. And I just, where will this be coming in? Where will the driveway be coming, Steel Road or off Manly?
Could you give us the-
It will utilize what's existing on Steel Road.
So it'll go in that way?
Yes.
Um, let's see, I had another question, I'm losing it. Um, how many parking places in?
At, at this time-
Is it going to be big?
It, it, we will cover all of that, uh, in just a minute. Applications, but not, uh, without direct, quick questions of-
All right, well, I'm good.
Thank you.
I'll give him space, thank you.
Next on the list, um, could you please help me with the name, please ma'am? Ma'am? Wendy? Right here, Wendy? Hey, could you, um, Cham? Thank you, thank you, pl- please forgive me, I, I just could not read the, the writing, please forgive me, please, please. Okay, so you're not, you're not speaking? All right, thank you. That's okay. Um, Marshall Holt? Marshall Holt? Patricia Penley?
My name is Patricia Penley and I live at eight eleven Manly Road. I've lived on this land for sixty-five years and I have a vested interest in this community. Um, my family and I own approximately fifty acres there. I'd also like to say that I believe that all people have a right to choose their own way to worship and to live as long as they respect their neighbors and are productive and contributing members of the community that they live and worship in. That being said, I do have some concerns about the proposed worship center being, uh, built on Manly Road. I'm aware that the Buddhists have had a worship place on four ninety-eight Steel Road that connects to this land, and they have been developing this land for some time. They now have two family buildings and several other structures that total over one million dollars. All of this is tax exempt. I believe that the land in question is purchased by a Mr. Passan from Mr. Terry Swett, who I know is Terry Swett, he was William Swett. This land is currently valued at over five thou- five hundred thousand dollars. If this property is placed under the same ownership as the existing property that they already own on Steel Road, that would all become tax exempt as well. This property is currently zoned as a five agricultural, excuse me. As it stands right now on QR Public, these are two separate parcels of land. Um, they're being, uh, they're addressing it to be more like it's one continuous parcel. And it is not unless it's been changed and just not documented yet on the public website. Um, most of the properties on Steel Road and Manly Road are zoned a three, a four and a five properties. This community has been agricultural as long as I can remember, and that's the way that we would like to keep it. Steel and Manly Roads are two-lane country roads used to go to residential properties. The closest businesses are on Highway nineteen forty-one and Highway ninety-two. This proposed development will bring more traffic and pollution to the area. This will lead to more wear and tear on our county roads. It will back up to land on the east side that is partially considered a flood plain or a wet area. And this addresses for, uh, one three zero three Manly Road. The back of this property does not park.
That'll be your time. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all who have signed up this evening for this application.
Okay, do I have, um, additional time for the applicant?
Actually, the, the lady who spoke in support took the remainder of your time.
Correct.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you for that reminder, I'm sorry, I skipped over there. Staff? Oh, no, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Have a motion to close the public hearing with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is none. We have closed the public hearing. Now we'll get a staff report.
Yes, ma'am. So as was stated before, this was approved at four ninety-eight Steel Road about fifteen years ago, I'd estimate. Um, they are proposing to expand into the adjacent parcel thirteen fifteen Manly. However, uh, they will not, uh, be using Manly as an access point. They've stated to me that they will be coming off their access point already on Steel Road and coming to the backs of these buildings back here. Um, so the proposal meets all the code requirements in terms of size and things of that- So the proposal meets all the code requirements in terms of size and things of that nature. It should not negatively impact Manly Road. I would have more of a problem if it had direct access to Manly. So this should not be an excessively active or noisy use, so that is in being compatible with the rural community area it's in. I do have some approval conditions that should apply should you choose to approve it. Number one, no access to Manly Road should be allowed. Number two, the buffer shall be reevaluated by Community Development Director and shall provide evergreen screening material where necessary. There was talk of a buffer back with the Steel Road rezoning or the special exception, I'm sorry. Me not being here at the time, not sure what it's like, or if it's even out there, but I think there's some areas that might benefit from this. The, the rear of some of the residences that are fronting Steel Road, the backs of those might benefit from some buffers, so I need to take a look at that. Number three, all building permits and inspections should be obtained. Number four, an erosion sediment control plan shall be submitted for approval. And number five, the temple they were showing in the drawings there, what I read, was six, fifty-six feet tall. That exceeds the maximum of thirty-five feet, so that's going to need a variance prior to it getting a building permit.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any con- comment or questions?
Well, unlike everybody else, I want people to worship like they do, like they feel like it. It appears to me, Wendy, that the illustration of the temple is a little bit obtrusive.
It is a two-story building, so, and these are.
It would be obtrusive if it was a one-story building to me. I'm talking about the neighborhood. I'm aware to, and things that are in the neighborhood that are not attractive are sometimes wind up affecting the appraisals for buildings or property that's being, as you well know, is being bought and sold.
Well, it is important to know that this, the worship building is set back quite a bit from the road. It's really in the middle of the property, so at the front, you're going to have your creek setbacks up at the front there.
From the road?
Well, if you look at the, scroll back down to the big map.
A bit of concept.
It's, it's right in the middle of that long piece of property. So, there we go. So up at the front, it's back behind where the current house is. So up in the, the first building that will be there is the house that's currently there and it's remaining. And then the worship center is the dark square.
Am I making any sense in what I'm trying to say?
Maybe you're concerned about the way the temple looks?
Yeah, as if I were a neighbor.
Well, what the temple is going to do is use the same, basically the same materials, the se- the same paint scheme and the same roof as exists in the buildings that are already there.
So Frank, Frank, just by eye on this plan, looking at a property line that's four hundred some odd feet, the temple would be set back around a thousand feet from Manly Road.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's kind of what I was asking. Thank you.
Please, no comment from public?
Come on, Doug. Come here if you want to.
This, this might be a little bit inappropriate.
A little bit inappropriate is okay.
But I was here initially when this temple was okay. And it has been endless encroachments, requesting buildings for one thing and building something else. And I think that Mr. Newton can relate to some of what I'm saying here. So I am very reluctant to vote approval on any kind of expansion here because I do not trust the outcome. I will be honest with you.
Mr. Hardwork, Hardwick, I was not working with the temple back in two thousand twelve. But I do know that going forward, they want to make sure they do everything correctly. It's part of the reason that they're working with me. Working with our civil engineer and making sure that things are done the right way.
Okay, I'm just talking history.
I understand.
Okay.
Are there any other comments from the members of the commission? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion for denial.
We have a motion for denial. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion for denial with a second. All in favor for the denial, please raise your hand. All opposed? The petition for denial is passed with a vote of two to one.
This will go to commissioners also on July twenty-fourth, the same room.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next application, twenty-five zero three Flume SS Land Holding Group LLC. Owner, five Whitten Avenue, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot one seventy-eight of the second land district. Parcel number one two two zero eight zero zero seven, consisting of twenty-three point three eight acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay District designation from the C two zone property, thus requiring a future land use map amendment.
Pardon me, but I thought, I thought according to their agenda, these had been tabled. Is that not?
I kept them on the agenda. This week can officially notate that they are being tabled. Yes.
Okay.
I would, yeah, I would, I would ask that, that we go ahead and sound all three, all, is it three?
Four.
Of these applications.
Okay.
And then, then we'll take an action.
Okay. Alright.
Do you want, um, Mr. Attorney, you need to vote on these separately. Is that correct?
It's correct. If you're going to say, if there's a motion to table, we still need to have them separately.
That's correct. So you will need to, uh, motion these separately, please, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Do I have a motion? Or is there any discussion? Is there a public hearing? There will not be a public hearing at this time.
That's correct.
So do I have a motion to take action on the first item?
I make a motion to table.
I make a motion. The motion is, is made to table the, this action. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Do I have a motion and a second to table this application? All in favor, raise your hand.
I don't know. I, I'd like some information from staff on that.
So it's requested to be tabled at the request of the applicant. So they're already done twice here, but to officially table it.
Okay, so the, when we brought back to the table, it is dependent upon the applicant. Is that correct?
Correct. It'll be likely in July. He is out of town right now.
Okay, so should the, uh, should the motion be that it would be tabled until opened by the applicant? Would that be appropriate?
We just say it till, until next meeting. He will be available then.
Ordinarily, we table and they go to the next meeting unless there is a special circumstance. So I would take it, Mr. Harvick, that the motion to table means it's tabled to July. Correct?
Okay, that's fine. Then, uh, my, my initial motion should.
Should stand. So we have a motion to table with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition and so it passes to be tabled until the next, uh, table. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next application is twenty-five zero four Flume Anthony Cornachi, Cornaccia. Owner, seven fifty-five High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot one seventy-seven of the second land district. Parcel number one one nine zero two zero four seven, consisting of twenty-six point oh nine acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay District designation from the C two zone property, thus requiring a future land use map amendment.
Same situation as the prior item.
That being the case, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to table.
You have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
You do.
Motion to table with a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition. Next item.
Madam Chair, the next application, twenty-five twenty Z SS Land Holding Group LLC. Owner, five Whitten Avenue, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot one seventy-eight of the second land district. Parcel number one twenty-two zero eight zero zero seven, consisting of twenty-three point three eight acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay District designation from the C two zone property for a wider array of commercial and industrial uses.
Same situation as the last item.
Do I have a motion to own this item?
Table this in.
Yeah, yeah, it's your turn.
I move the table until the July meeting.
You have a motion to table until the July meeting. Do we have a second?
That's second, then.
We have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition. The motion passes in the final application.
Madam Chair, the next application, twenty-five two one Z Anthony Cornaccia. Owner, seven fifty-five High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot one seven seven of the second land district. Parcel number one one nine zero two zero four seven, consisting of twenty-six point oh nine acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay District designation from the C two zone property for a wider array of commercial and industrial uses.
Same situation as the last item.
So do I have a motion to?
Table.
The, we have a motion to table this application. Do I have a second?
That's right.
A second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, the next application, twenty-five twenty-two Z five eight five Spalding Investments LLC. Owner, fifty South McDonnell Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three, located in Land Lot fifteen of the third land district. Parcel number two one nine zero six zero zero one, consisting of a hundred and twenty-seven point four five acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone the AR one agricultural residential and R two single-family residential to C one C manufacturing light for a proposed data center campus.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Certainly.
We have a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
You do.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? There is no opposition. We have now a public hearing on this item.
The applicant is here, Madam Chair.
We'll hear from the applicant first.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good to see you this evening. My name is Stephen Jones. The law firm of Taylor Duma, my address sixteen hundred Parkwood Circle, Suite two hundred at Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three three nine. Like I said, I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, five eighty-five Spalding Investments LLC. Just also the owner of the subject property. That's where Alice, I've got a PowerPoint. Do we have a clicker? I know staff would probably go over this on some of the, uh, it's a preliminary matter. Madam Chairwoman, can I reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal if necessary?
As necessary, yes.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that's something we probably should have brought up. Well, I don't know if we got the volume here for it that I was anticipating. I was going to suggest that thirty minutes per side, but it doesn't appear that we have.
We have, we only have one sign up within.
Nevermind.
Don't want to hear me talk for thirty minutes.
Your, your, your time allocated is ten minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I'm sorry. This is the subject parcel fronts on North McDonnell Road, High Falls Road, and most importantly, State Route sixteen, A, otherwise known as AKB. It's a hundred and twenty-seven point four five nine acres. Uh, I want to show you here, we had a little glitch in the GIS map. It, it doesn't show a recent rezoning, but those orange parcels and the orange that I've added, those are PDD zoned parcels. The purple shown on the screen and the purple that I've added are either C two or C one C properties. And you'll see the subject parcel outlined in blue above this. Zooming in, you can see its proximity to other parcels of five eighty-five were previously owned by the applicant, five eighty-five, as well as the proximity to the lakes at Green Valley. This, the lakes at Green Valley, those rezonings to the south, as well as other rezonings further west, sorry, east on AKB are effectuation of the comprehensive plan, which for decades has called for the four-lane state route, AKB, which connects Highway seventy-five and, as you know, the city of Griffin with a swath of land as prime and right for industrial unemployment development. And that's what we over the past few years have seen come to fruition. This is another, uh, large tract of land that has come to fruition or is being proposed today for rezoning to C one C. I want to be clear, this application that you have before you is a zoning decision. I'm going to talk a little bit later about some staff recommended conditions. But you have before you a C one, C zoning, uh, rezoning application. Later, in a different application, you have a special exception for a data center, uh, but those are two distinct things. So this application is really about changing the zoning of this parcel to, uh, an employment designation that's consistent with the comp plan and consistent with other zonings in the area. When we do look at the comprehensive plan, and there's been significant discussion tonight on a lot of applications about the comprehensive plan. As Mr. Allen said, it's a tool in the toolbox and as, and when we look at that, it guides the decisions that, the recommended, recommending decisions that this commission makes and the ultimate decisions that the Board of Commissioners makes. When we look at that, economic development is one of the key priorities. When we go further into the comprehensive plan and we look at the future land use map and the character areas on the future land use map, that is specifically called out in your zoning ordinance to guide your, or recommendations on zoning actions, as well as the Board of Commissioners' ultimate legislative decisions on rezoning requests. When we look at this, we look at, at this parcel in this application, it is within the employment corridor. You'll see the property outlined in red here, uh, and then you'll see the employment area outlined in, uh, yellow. That's corresponding color, but blue is shown on the map. In the employment area, you, the pro- uh, it calls for general development throughout the employment character area on sixteen. Especially on AKB, it calls for office, but most importantly, industrial development in a campus-like setting. That is what you'll hear when we get to the special exception application is what is being proposed there. But just as a little prelude, that application will sh- is a special exception for a data center in a campus-like environment. Again, the C one C application, the rezoning application before you is not about the specific use. It is about rezoning and whether it is appropriate. When you look at the factors which your staff has analyzed and recommended approval, whether it's appropriate to rezone this parcel consistent with the employment character area shown in your comprehensive plan. And not to steal Charlotte's thunder on the staff report, but I do want to note a few things on the zoning conditions that we'd like to discuss. First and foremost, you've got seven recommended conditions of approval because staff does. First and foremost, you've got seven recommended conditions of approval because staff does recommend and uh approval is, number one, it says all measures required by the DRI report shall be implemented. Uh it's our understanding that Department of Community Affairs does not consider data centers to be developments of regional impact, so this will not go through a DRI process, so we'd request that condition be struck. Otherwise, it'd be impossible to have a DRI when a DRI is not required. Uh second, well, the second condition is that the property shall be rezoned to C-one C for the data center campus. We'd like that to be clarified. Um and I believe Mr. Allen is okay with this. This being a a zoning decision on the underlying zoning of the parcel, we don't want to pigeonhole the property to that specific use. That's why we have the special exception application later is to ask this board and the Board of Commissioners for that specific use. But we we don't think it's appropriate, we'd ask it to pigeonhole the property to that specific use on this specific application. So we'd prefer to to say be rezoned to C-one C for the data center campus or other permitted uses in C-one C. As for number three, if this requires would require the any data center operated on the property to comply with any Spalding County codes, we just request that say as they existed on the date the application was filed. This property is in proximity to the new airport site. Uh staff's got a condition here ensuring that the height restrictions for the airport overlay zone will be adhered to. I think we're generally fine with that as well. Um and when we go into development, we'll also coordinate with the FAA and make sure that there are no conflicts there. All other county landscaping and buffer requirements shall be adhered to, that's perfectly fine, it's just a restatement of general law. Uh the area between the buffer and eastern property boundary shall remain un- as an undisturbed natural area. When we get to the special exception application later, I'll show you that we've actually revised the concept plan to incorporate Mr. Allen's recommended condition there. Uh and then the seventh is that there shall be a fifty-foot wide, undisturbed planted buffer along High Falls Road with at least ten feet of front width of the buffer with a berm and planted evergreen trees. I I would like to clarify there that that wouldn't prohibit access onto High Falls Road because we may have some access there. Uh but generally, we're fine with that condition except for the requirement for access. So with that, I would ask that you vote consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh and it's called for employment and industrial development on Highway sixteen, Arthur K. Bolton Parkway. Should you have any questions for me or the applicant, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. Otherwise, I'd be happy to address any issues that may come up in further public comment.
Thank you very much, do we have time remaining? A minute and forty-nine seconds remaining in your time.
That well.
Thank you.
Mr. Burns, Greg Burns.
Greg Burns, fifty-four fifty-one, West McIntosh Road, you all know me by now. Um I actually have a procedural question before I launch into my remarks. Um Commissioner Harris, uh you recused yourself of the last data center um uh that came before this commission, and I was wondering if you were planning to do so again tonight?
I beg your pardon, I didn't hear it that well.
I said, uh for the last data center, uh you recused yourself, and I was wondering if you were going to do so again tonight? Because if you do, then there's no quorum.
I.
That's my procedural.
Except, well, uh uh I in my instructions, long ago, about seven, six o'clock, I'd instructed the audience not to direct any direct questions to any one commissioner.
I I understand.
If you're asking something of one commissioner, then they're out of order. So I apologize, but that's the conditions by which you're speaking.
Okay, I apologize, and may I continue?
Thank you, you may continue.
Okay. Um uh so I I will address this uh first with regards to um the rezoning, um since there's going to be a special exception. Um Mr. Jones just uh tried to separate the two, but I would argue that you can't separate the two because if we're talking about rezoning, then the natural question, if it's not for a data center, then what are we rezoning it for? Um it could just be left as it is. Um so with regards to the criteria for rezoning, um would the, as you know, the county has specific criteria. And so would the proposed rezoning permit a use that's suitable in view of use of the adjacent property? So my question to the commission then is, where is this going to end? Is we know that there is now uh been through this commission, another data center that's approved on the other side of AKB. Is AKB going to become a data center corridor? And so my question then for discussion is where does that end, what is the goal here? The other issue that I wish to focus on is the criteria, is there a threat to public safety if rezoned? Um I would argue, yes, there is, and the threat is to our local grid. Um the North the North America Electric Reliability Corporation, NERC, which is an industry group based in Atlanta, recently put out its report for twenty-twenty-five. And I'm going to quote uh directly from parts of that uh report. They said, "The size and speed at which data centers are being connected to and operated on the grid is creating one of the greatest near-term reliability challenges. Recent events have demonstrated the importance of improving the industry's understanding of data center collective behavior during times when the grid is under stress." They specifically, is that my three minutes?
I'm sorry, I I should have made it clear, there was ten minutes for the for the speaker.
May I continue?
You may continue.
Up up, so they specifically give the example uh that there was a fifteen-hundred megawatt data centers that disconnected simultaneously uh due to a line fault in twenty-twenty-four. And they point out that this loss of load is the size comparable to a large nuclear power plant coming online immediately. So what they're saying is because of the way the data centers operate, they have very strict requirements on their power, and if if the grid is not providing exactly what they need, then they go offline and on to generator power to do what they do. That in turn results in a surge to the local grid, um and many grids are not currently built to handle that. And so uh that is what I argue is the threat to public safety that needs to be considered when you're considering data centers in this county. Uh there's a balance between the hardship on the property owner and benefit to the public, not in rezoning. Um I don't buy these constitutional objections. Uh people buy this property knowing what the zoning is, and there's not a default expectation that it has to be rezoned for the use that they want to. The one last comment I'll make in reference to what Mr. Jones said, the last data center did have to go through the DRI. Um so I'm not sure why this one doesn't, maybe it's the size, but I'll stop my remarks there, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all who've signed up for this application.
So we have time left.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, uh I do want to say that this, the reason that the Board of Commissioners chose to make data centers a special exception is so that there would be an independent application like you've got before you as your next public hearing item. Where does where does the C where does the industrial zoning stop? Well, it stops when you leave the employment corridor area on Highway sixteen. This has been called out in the comp plan for for decades. This is a natural fruition and culmination of what the comp plan has asked for for decades, which is employment development on sixteen. There was some discussion from Mr. Burns about stress on the grid. And I'm sure as Mr. Galloway can attest, uh the Georgia Public Service Commission is in discussions with Georgia Power right now for to ensure that large-load customers such as data centers pay their fair share and do not create reliability concerns. Uh as well as our other power providers in the state have an obligation to do so. That's not really a zoning question, that's really a question for our utility providers.
Thank you, that is your time.
Thank you so much.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion to close the hot public hearing, do I have a second?
Do, second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there are no opposition, the clo- public hearing is now closed. Staff.
Yes ma'am, uh so just to clarify some points um from Mr. Jones here. Uh yes, the other uh data center application did go through a DRI. That was because I asked Stephanie Wagner of Three Rivers about that, and she said, "Hi David, potentially would require DRI review. Did you know the, do you know the overall square footage of the possible buildings? If it's over five hundred K square feet altogether, or if it's part of a phased project, that will eventually meet that threshold, then yes." That was like over two million, we have over a million four I hear, I believe, with the eight buildings proposed. So based on Stephanie Wagner's words, it would need the DRI. Also, our staff regulations for approval, uh it definitely goes within our um AKB corridor slash employment corridor in the comp plan, it aligns with that. Just as the other one did with the employment corridor on High Falls Road. I will only speak to the rezoning part of this and leave the special exception for the next item. So based on that, I do approve recommend approval of the rezoning to C-one C. I think the number one condition about the DRI report should be implemented, should will be is still valid. Uh number two, what he was talking about, property shall be rezoned to C-one C only for the data center campus. The applicant was expressing concerns with if this gets approved and then a year down the road or something, there's a hiccup or something with a utility company or financing or something like that, then and they can't do the data center, then they're bound by this, don't we do a data center? They want to have more flexibility, keep it C-one C because we don't have a reversion clause in our code. Keep it C-one C and don't put it in a box for the data center campus. So that's their rationale behind altering uh approval, I guess, condition two. Uh approval condition three, all Spalding County code standards for data centers should be complied with. Four, all airport overlay zone height restrictions should be adhered to. Five, all county buffer and landscaping requirements should be adhered to. Six, area between stream buffer and eastern property boundary shall remain as an undisturbed natural area. There's no proposed building over there anyway, and there is a stream. And seven, there should be a minimum fifty-foot wide, undisturbed planted buffer along the High Falls Road frontage with at least ten feet of the front width of the buffer with a berm and planted evergreen trees. You do have some residences across the street, you do have two buildings running parallel to that property line, so.
Madam Chair, could I say something real quick?
Yes, please.
I I probably committed an omission a second ago. We usually combine these for purposes of hearing, and then you vote separately, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch that on the agenda. And I would point out that AKB, and this is in AKB.
Yes.
Requires a site plan and it's conditioned on that site plan, correct?
Yes.
So the site plan that's been submitted is effectively for some type of business campus, whether it's data center or something else. So what I would urge you to do is let's go ahead and conduct the hearing on the special exception, and then you can vote on these items separately, and I apologize for my omission, but that's the way we should have done it so that we didn't have to go through two public hearings.
Okay, be- before that, could I ask a question? Uh the number two item here. I know that from prior meetings and prior votes, there's a decommissioning clause in here.
There is in the special exception part, yes.
If 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 you say here that it's uh for strictly a a data center only, and and you know the way technology's going, we do not know how long these data centers are going to last. You know, you you can see how technology's going. Uh if it was decommissioned, uh we not going to have a problem with that particular that particular comment there, correct?
Well, I happen to believe, as Mr. Burns said, that they go hand in hand. If you approve it for a data center campus, the special exceptions approved, the very specific decommissioning process and the approval conditions for that special exception would apply.
Okay, so they would have to come back to you anyway, basically?
Well, they would have to follow a very stringent decommissioning process if it was abandoned or went out of business.
Yeah.
Couldn't just let it sit there, no.
I also have a question, and the applicant stated that there were several, what were were at least two of the conditions that they would like to have reworded. Um one was, I don't remember, it was two or three about the application at the time they filed as opposed to at the time of this vote. Uh can you help me with that?
Mr. Jones, could you go to the microphone, please, I have a quick question.
Yes, Chairwoman.
You you stated of the, there were, you you suggested rewording of some of the conditions of staff.
Yes, Chairwoman.
One of them was the difference between what's happening today as opposed to what happened at at or at the time that you filed the application.
That's correct, and I on the first condition on the DRI, do you want to say that DCA determination was like within the last month that they said data centers are no longer DRIs? Uh that's why we went through.
Is there any reason for that, because all of their other requirements are based on square footage?
I, it's just, I have not seen enough the reasoning behind that determination. But what I've heard from other local jurisdictions is that they were told by other regional commissions that data centers were determined by DCA to not require DRIs. That's all I, that is the extent of my knowledge.
Okay.
Um this, the other condition was number three, all Spalding County codes for data centers existing as of the date the application was filed. I just wanted to be clear because the law affords an applicant the right to have an application considered under the law and effective at the time that it was adopted. So if there's intervening code changes while this um application is pending, we just wanted to be clear about that. Uh and then the final one was number seven. Um we on that site plan to Mr. Galloway's point is that it's specific to this application and that the rezoning under the AKB ordinance overlay that the rezoning would be conditioned upon, it shows a driveway onto High Falls Road. So I just want to make sure that the site plan and the condition don't conflict. And the applicant and I had concern that they might, as seven is written. So if we just added, except for the driveway shown on the concept plan to the beginning of condition seven, that's fi- that would satisfy the applicant's concern.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman.
Um for the record, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, um I would, yeah, put that to record to say as amended with the app with the petitions of the applicant for item number seven. So let's go back and look at number one.
Just as an aside, I just did a quick search through DCA, and they are still requiring a DRI for data centers.
My proposal, thank you very much, would be if if we say you've got to have one, and they go and make application, and they say, no, we don't have to have one again, that would be something in writing we would have specific to this case. I would prefer that we leave it in place and let the them come back to us and tell us they don't need need us. So that would be a suggestion. And and on um number three, I don't, I would defer to the uh zoning attorney to to give us a an opinion.
The only thing that they're saying is that the development standards that exist as of the date it's approved apply apply to the data center if it's approved, that that's fine, that's fine. That is pre- pretty standard with regard to anything related to special especially to data centers. Now that, data centers have become sort of this unique thing that the in economic development people love and. That the economic development people love and Mr. Burns and other folks hate. And you can see it in PSC hearings and you can see it everywhere. And I'm not being critical of Mr. Burns' opinion, it's just that the thought process is very divided. All right, but basically, as I'm reading what, and what Stephen was saying is. Bottom line is if we've got development criteria for the data center, it applies as of the date the data center is approved.
Thank you. So we have clarity on the applications, the recommendation, conditions by staff, does that help?
What about number two with only for data center campus?
Well, as my understanding that, that if they get the okay, it's strictly going to be for a data center. But if it's decommissioned, my question would was, was this, this exception is going to have to be taken out of here if it were to go anything else, right? In other words, you would have the, you would have the say so of what might come behind a decommissioned area. Because under the zoning, that means anybody, anybody could come in and do anything that's, that's allowed within the C one C, right?
Right, I think what I'm referring to is let's say this gets approved, the special exception gets approved. Before a data center is built and even has a need for decommissioning and something falls through with financing, the utilities or something. Are they now boxed in with the unusable C one C zoning, we said data center campus only?
I'm sorry, under AKB, you have to be tied to a site plan. So let's assume that in the future, that this data center campus did not ultimately develop. You have now zoned the property C one C, but it's still within AKB, which means somebody would have to come in unless y'all change AKB. And do a planned industrial or planned commercial development. All right, now, by definition, that's got to be approved. The only thing that we would be saying is if that happens, or whether it's this owner or whether it's a subsequent owner, they would have to come back and have a new site plan approved under AKB.
Okay, that's, that's good.
I, I don't, again, AKB approval is dependent upon a planned development with a site plan, either commercial or industrial. At least in this case, it's commercial.
Galloway.
Yes, sir.
Are we proposing to vote on the special exception first and then the zoning?
No, you don't have to, no.
Special exception can't happen without the rezoning.
Without the rezoning, that's correct.
Because I'm going to have to defer on the special exception.
I have one more question for David. It's a very dense site plan that is proposed under the special exception, but that is shown as an exhibit as part of this petition for the rezoning. It was, is that, is that a problem, is that just me, or is that a problem under the density as far as the building?
Could you reword that, I don't follow that.
The, the number and size of buildings that are shown on the site plan that is an exhibit to this petition seems very, very dense to me. Now, I'm, I'm not familiar and did not find anything that addressed that from my own independent reading. And so I'm asking the question, is, is density an issue at all?
Well, it's not, as, as you would do like a residential neighborhood. But I do have, there was a standard in here about percentage of impervious and they were well below it.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Madam Chair, the question would be whether the site plan complies with the requirements in AKB.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a certain percentage you couldn't exceed and they did not exceed it.
They've got more data centers on here than Spalding County's got mental capacity to adopt, but we, if it meets the criteria of the ordinance, we got it.
I hear you, thank you. So. Do we need to sound the, the special exception and hear the presentation for that? We have not done that yet.
If, if you want to go ahead and hear it, you can have the public hearing on that and then vote on the application separately, that would be fine.
That would be.
Well, would it be off key, knowing that Mr. Harris is going to vote against, going to have to dismiss himself, recuse himself. Would it be just to go ahead and table that item, knowing that, or should we go through the process?
Okay, Dr. Ledbetter.
Y'all are challenging us tonight, aren't you?
Yeah, but I think because you have a limited population at the table here. I would be more than glad to tell you why I was recusing myself, just so that I'm covering myself, that if anybody says anything in the future. But I have been in contact with a firm that wants to build a data center on some of my property. I haven't heard from him in the last sixty days, so it may be dead, I do not know. But I'd rather be cautious than convicted.
Mr. Attorney. Okay.
At first glance, I do not see a conflict.
I do not see quite different than that.
Well, it's, it's certainly not a legal conflict under the conflict of interest in zoning statutes. But as you know, we have given each individual board member here, Board of Appeals or at BOC, fairly liberal decision making as to whether or not they may have a conflict beyond the strict confines of that statute. And we have no requirement that Mr. Harris has to vote. The my gut, my gut feeling is that I would recommend, let's go ahead and get the public hearing out of the way on the data center and then you hold a vote and then we can come back next month if we have to. And you don't have to have another public hearing. If Frank can make a decision as to whether he's going to vote on the data center or not. If that's acceptable. Now, there's no divine guidance in that and that's not perfect, but if it, if it's acceptable to you, you can proceed.
What is divine guidance, I could go to the temple again.
So. The only confusion I have is should we jump into the public hearing for the special exception? Or should we go ahead and take a vote now on the zoning? Is, I wasn't clear what the direction on that was.
Okay.
Do not buy yourself.
We're going to vote on them separately anyway.
That's correct.
So what we've heard and what we make a decision regarding the zoning.
Whatever y'all want to do within the parameters of being able to take a legal vote is acceptable. I was just taking responsibility for not catching that we usually consolidate rezonings and special exceptions into one hearing and you vote separately. And that, I apologize because I fear that I have caused the confusion.
What is the will of the members of the commission? Would you like to go ahead and, and make a vote on this item? It has been sounded and it's legally before us, so.
Bear in mind, approval or denial of the rezoning does not necessarily mean the data center.
That's correct.
Okay.
Let's do the rezoning first.
Do I have a motion on the rezoning petition?
I make a motion, we, we approve the rezoning with all stipulations intact relative to any change you might have made because of, of the applicants there. If that is appropriate, to get my point across. I think you made the change of wording on item seven.
Yes.
An item three?
Correct.
An item one?
An item one, however, we still have the lingering problem child with item two. But if we're bound to the site plan, which we are, every single one of these buildings says data center.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
It's not warehouses.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as stipulated with the conditions of staff and amended in this setting. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is no opposition, so the zoning application has been approved as stated.
Madam Chair, I'll read the next application, twenty-five zero eight S, five eighty-five Spalding Investment LLC, owner fifty South McDonough Road, Griffin, Georgia, three zero two two three. Located in land lot fifteen of the third land district, parcel number two one nine zero six zero zero one, consisting of one hundred twenty-seven point four five acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for a proposed data center campus per C one C manufacturing light requirements.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion to open this public hearing, do I have a second?
You do.
And a second, all in favor, raise your hand. The motion passed, we will open the public hearing.
Madam Chair, your applicant is here this evening.
The applicant will speak first, you have ten minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, commissioners, appreciate your time and attention tonight. Again, my name is Stephen Jones, the law firm of Taylor Duma, on behalf of the applicant, five eighty-five Spalding Investments, also the owner of the property. My address is sixteen hundred Parkwood Circle, suite two hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three three nine. Ms. Morales, could I get the PowerPoint, please? As noted in the prior presentation, this property fronts on AKB North McDonough and High Falls Road. I'll incorporate by reference, because it is getting late, all my comments on the comprehensive plan and the employment corridor and how this property fits in and is an effectuation of the decades of land use planning that have been embodied in numerous comprehensive plans. That leads me to the special exception in C one C. Should the Board of Commissioners choose to rezon this property, C one C requires a special exception for data centers. With that, you have this proposal for a data center campus. These are buildings of varying sizes in a campus-like setting with access on High Falls and North McDonough Road. Your AKB overlay also says that there shall be no new curb cuts on Arthur K. Bolton Parkway to encourage developments such as this, which use existing streets interconnected to the state route. When we look at the buildings, they are sizes of a hundred and seventy thousand square feet. And that comprises six of the total eight buildings and then two that are two hundred thousand square feet in footprint. These are two-story data centers, but they, buildings, but they will obviously still comply with the height restrictions of the underlying zoning. When we look at the total buildout, the interesting thing about data centers is it's, or any ad valorem taxation is it's not just the real property and the buildings, but you also get taxed on the personal corporate property inside. And the interesting thing about data centers is the computers inside are of substantial value. This is a ballpark number because you don't know until it's obviously fully built out and all the equipment's appraised. But round numbers, you're looking at something like one point five billion dollars with a B. Plugging that into the ad valorem tax calculator on the Spalding County Tax Assessor's website results in an annual tax revenue of twenty-two point nine million dollars per year. Breaking that down, what does that look like? That's the equivalent of thirty-two percent of fiscal year twenty twenty-five county budget of seventy-one million dollars or seventy-two point nine percent of combined law enforcement, jail, et cetera, public safety budgets, which I calculated to be somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-one point four million dollars or be the equivalent of approximately twenty percent of the school systems budget. I know power always comes up with data centers. And the way, the position that, and Mr. Burns referenced that in his comments, and I'm sure may reference it in comments now. Because of the proliferation of data centers, what, the majority or all of the power providers that I'm aware of have said is that when, they're looking at whether to commit power to a site, they want to know that the local jurisdiction is bought in first. And so they say, zone it and we will come. Zone it and then we'll look at and tell you if we're going to get your power. Because they've been committing power to sites that do not have the zoning entitlement and then they're, you know, these things do take a lot of power, so they've got to adequately plan for it. So they have solved the chicken and the egg problem for us. Water provision, we have a commitment letter from Spalding County Water Authority. You, generally, these systems are closed loop. When we look at the equivalents of a closed loop sixteen thousand gallon system, that's the equivalent of forty-five houses. There has been some concern with other data centers in terms of their water usage. But you have, I believe, on your agenda later this evening, a proposed data center ordinance that encourages closed loop systems. When we went and asked Spalding County Water Authority for a water availability letter, we anticipated a closed loop system that's not consuming the substantial amount of water that has caused some public outcry with other systems. Here, we are looking at Spalding County Water Authority as a sewer provider, there's going to be a sewer line running along AKB to a new Spalding County Water Authority plant towards the county line. Again, minimal sewer output, should for some reason that not come to fruition, we do have a contingency plan, you could do, we would, would reconfigure for some sort of onsite sewer treatment. Looking at the special exception, your staff with this also analyzed the factors under your zoning ordinance and recommended approval with thirteen conditions. I'll start with number three, I could be wrong in the information I heard about the DRI, but if that's incorrect, we will comply with that condition. Number two is regarding the regulations in effect at the time the application was filed. Number one is in the same vein, I believe we had that same conversation on the rezoning application. I don't think that was controversial. If we could have the same change to those as well, that would be greatly permitted.
Those refer to AKB not, well, I'm sorry, now they don't, never mind, I'm tired, never mind.
You scared me for a second. Condition number four, going back in order, that's consistent with a rezoning condition that will follow the airport overlay. Five is areas between the stream buffer and the eastern property shall remain as undisturbed natural area. That's also consistent with the rezoning conditions, that one is okay as well. Number six is that the area between the stream buffer and western property shall remain undisturbed and natural area as much as possible based on the submitted site plan. Again, and I meant to talk with Mr. Allen about this before the meeting, I have the opportunity to, I failed to do so frankly. Because AKB is site plan specific, we just want to make sure that the conditions and the site plan do not conflict. So that condition's fine, but we do show improvements on that side, particularly electrical facilities, substation or other sorts of electrical assets. So again, to leave that as undisturbed as possible based on the site plan ensures that the condition and the concept plan do not conflict. And again, again, on seven, if we could add the language to ensure that it does not conflict with the concept plan, except as shown on the concept plan, there shall be an undisturbed buffer with the berm and evergreen trees. We looked into condition number eight, that's the same, our modification is the same, we just want to be site plan or concept plan specific. Within a fifty-foot setback along AKB, there should be a nat, a natural undisturbed zone based on the site plan. The High Falls Road entrance shall be The High Falls road entrance shall be required to have an A-cell, D-cell lane and a left-turn lane, no modification to that. And then ten is, we had a discussion earlier about power providers, right? The power providers said, we're not going to play the chicken and the egg game anymore, go get your zoning entitlements and come back. So for ten, ten would say full utility availability letters, availability statements, including water, sewer, natural gas, and electricity, shall be provided by all relevant utility companies, we want to say at the time of lane disturbance permit application. Again, that's because we got to get entitled before we can get commitments. And I just want to clarify that by relevant, you know, let's say that we had to do onsite sewage treatment, we don't want to, we want to be served by the Water Authority, but if we did, then we wouldn't need a sewer letter, because that would not be relevant to the development. We intend to be served by natural gas and use some of that for some of the power demand on site, but likewise, if we were not to be served by natural gas, then natural gas would not be relevant, so we want to make sure there's that clarification of that condition. Eleven, we discussed the closed water loop, the closed looped water cooling system, whenever possible, so again, we're contemplating it, and the condition encourages it, as does your ordinance that's on your agenda for later tonight. Twelve, an acoustic noise study is required, we do have a little bit of heartburn about that, just as to what it entails, and we would like that to be submitted at the time of the LVP, consistent with what we've got in number ten. But, you know, that's, that's not our biggest concern, and then we're fine with the decommissioning.
Thank you. That is your time.
Mr. Greg Burns?
Greg Burns, fifty-four fifty-one West McIntosh Road.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
I'm sorry.
What? I'm sorry.
You have ten minutes.
Wow.
Yeah.
I promise not to use them all.
Thank you.
As, as I guess, the only adversary in this process, I do think it's, it's reasonable to hear the counterarguments to what Mr. Jones has said. So talking about the power, I think what you've seen is, is our essentially spec proposals, because there is no project yet on the drawing board, other than what the plans are, but that is, there's no, the way these things work is you go out and get zoning approval, then you, with that in hand, you can go out and get the investors to build the property. None of that exists yet, to my knowledge. There are companies that do this, QTS, and what we are dealing with here is what many in the industry believe is a, is the next real estate bubble. What you're seeing is speculation in the real estate market to buy up these properties, on the hopes that someone will actually come in and build the data center before the bubble bursts. Many in the industry believe that these large data centers are going to be obsolete in a few years, because new algorithms like DeepSeek are showing that, that many of the AI algorithms can be done more efficiently than current processes. We don't know, nobody knows where this is going, hence it is speculation. The issue of power is a real one. Just because Georgia Power or the other entities say they will come and bring power, it still has real costs to the community. That is what the election we just had for the Public Service Commission was about, the primaries, and it will be an issue in November. The primary issue that these candidates are going to be arguing about are data centers and who pays for them. So currently, Georgia Power is essentially pushing out the cost of building out the grid to fuel these data centers to the rest of Georgia. Now, Spalding County, would that hurt Spalding County? Well, probably not, I mean, I'm going to talk about the tax revenue in a minute, but it does hurt the other rural counties, the other hundred and fifty-some counties that don't have data centers, but still their rates increase, and residents want to know, well, why are our rates going up? No one can give a good answer, and that's what, that's what the race for the Public Service Commission is going to be about this fall. The tax revenue, as Mr. Galloway said, development people love these things, because they see dollar signs coming to the county. It's hard to argue with that. I would say those figures, they were, they were up there so quickly, I didn't get a good bead on it, but I saw a couple of commas in there, so I have an idea. That's an estimate, it's an ad valorem tax based on property tax, it's not real estate, it's not based on the real estate values, it's based on the, the value of the computers and the equipment inside the building. Now, anyone who owns computers knows how fast those depreciate. Computer, I, I, I think, I think depreciation schedules probably five years, but I would expect it's much faster for that kind of equipment at the rate that it's turned over. It's not clear who would accurately value that, I would say, go ask, you know, Fayette County, you know, are they getting their tax revenues that they thought they were? I don't believe they are, it's too soon to say, and all of this may go away before the county sees those revenues. And so the crux of my argument is the harm to the public in terms of the effects on the grid, and the unknowns in terms of the tax revenue outweigh the benefit to the property owner in this case, so thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all who've signed up for this application.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing? I'm sorry, if we did not sign up to speak, we don't, we are not. Okay, thank you for that clarification, appreciate it. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm moved.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous, the public hearing is closed. Staff?
So from, I need some clarification, because I know this was discussed when I first came here, and I think Dr. Ledbetter can better explain this. There is, there's some talk about interparcels access or something coming from a road, service road, or something from the DOT, the highway, is that no longer a thing?
Georgia DOT will not allow any additional curb cuts from Highway sixteen.
There is access, has to be shown on the plan.
That is correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Staff recommended for approval, like we did the rezoning, we do have the thirteen condition, approval conditions there, which Mr. Jones pretty much read and spoke of. The thirteenth one is a decommissioning, lengthy decommissioning process that needs to be followed. So again, staff recommends approval for this, is aligned with the comp plan, and is part of the intent for light industrial on that quarter.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have a comment or question or discussion?
David, item three was reinstated back in there, which you had marked out initially on some of the paperwork, that's correct, was that the DRI?
DRI.
On the rezoning ones, it was in there, we restated it, so yes, it's part of this as well.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion or comments?
I'm good.
We're good. I will entertain a motion on this petition.
I make a motion that we approve application twenty-five D dash zero eight S with all the stipulations by staff and also the decommissioning aspects also.
You have a, a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All oppose? Any abstention? One abstention.
Madam Chair, I was over there looking, we had, used to maintain a book at the chairman and county manager's desk on the dais, that set out rules and guidelines for voting in the event you have members absent, but you have a quorum. As best I can recall, the policy that the county had approved was that a motion to approve or motion to deny would carry if it had a majority of those present and voting. So as a result, again, we can't find the book, we don't, I have no idea where it is, I'm basing that on the recollection that I had from the policies we had years ago. So under that scenario, this goes forward with a recommendation approval, because we had a majority of the quorum vote, and that majority voted in favor, or recommended in favor.
Thank you for that clarification.
Madam Chair, next.
I might add, we have not had only three of you in quite a while.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda is the proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Appendix Four zoning, adding, adding new Appendix O exterior architectural standards for new construction.
I would like to, as a matter of personal desire, to take a five-minute, maybe a seven-minute break, just because I have to.
Okay.
We'll be back. We'll be back.
Yes, I should have stood up.
Is this your pretty pen?
Yeah.
It looks pretty good. I guess I need to help.
And I told them they're gonna get pen to share.
It's a purty pen.
What?
No.
You just make the next meeting longer and longer. The conveyor belt is not stopping, so. It's like the I Love Lucy episode where they're on the conveyor belt with the candy. It's just gonna keep coming.
They still come.
Please fasten your seatbelts, put your trays in the right and left position.
We are back in session. All members of the board are back in chairs. It's time to move on.
Madam Chair, did you want me to read this, this application back into the record a second time or do you want to go with the first?
Yes, please.
All right. Next on the agenda is the proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Appendix Four zoning, adding new Appendix O exterior architectural standards for new construction.
Mr. Allen, will you give us an introduction?
Yes, so this is a lengthy ordinance, it's an important ordinance, but this has been around for review for about three months now, so I'm not gonna obviously go into every aspect of this ordinance, but this does govern exterior architecture standards for subdivisions, in part on standalone houses out in the country, addresses commercial, industrial, all that as well. This is something the commissioner, Board of Commissioners wanted to do for a long time, so this is our completed version of it. It will never be a perfect document, and this likewise will not be as well, so I would recommend, unless there's major concerns with it, recommending it for approval, there will always be tweaks for years to come, but I don't know what exactly the board may want to comment on specifically, but it is a public hearing as well for the approximately three people left in the audience.
Thank you for that introduction. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Oh, moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor, please raise your hand, all opposed, no opposition, we will move forward with the public hearing.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up for this application.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion to close public hearing, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, motion and second to close the public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand, opposed, there is no opposition, we are closing the public hearing. Do you have a report other than what you have already done in your explanation?
Uh, no ma'am, I do not.
Okay, are there any comments or specific issues to be addressed by the members of the council?
Well, I'm on page eight forty-three, and I see historically designated building. You're working on something like that, aren't you, or is that part of this?
Uh, it is a separate document, but it does address renovations, remodels, repairs to historic buildings and part section of this, yes.
I've asked the local historic preservation society, they perhaps give some input in the future on that, and they've agreed to do so. Thank you.
Any further discussion by the members of the committee? Commission. Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Motion approved written.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion to approve with a second, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, petition has passed.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda, proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Appendix Four zoning, adding new Appendix P historic property preservation ordinance.
And this item is before us for discussion only, would you elude, tell us more about that, David?
I will refer to the county attorney here.
All right, David has drafted a first draft of a historic preservation ordinance, and as David will tell you, that this identifies what he refers to as the low-hanging fruit of historic property, which are, which are those properties that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. This is put on the agenda tonight for discussion only, and it is not for your vote tonight. I think this is the first time this has been on an agenda, and it does. So, we would ask that you look at it, walk through it, make comments on it, and come back next month if possible, at which time a public hearing can be conducted, or, if not then, you can make comments and we make revisions and it comes back at another time. Again, this is the starting point for the development of a new appendix to govern historic properties.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to cramp you, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, I have a suggestion that we as a body, like we have had in the past, to have a formal work session where we all, including our outside members if possible, have a work session with the staff and attorney and the county manager, should he choose to join us, to go through this comprehensively as we did before with the four articles that we've reviewed before, and that are coming up next on the agenda. It would be almost prohibitive for us to find a date between now and the, and the next agenda, given what, I'm going to be out of town, I know that other commissioners are also going to be out of town, and things are already tied in the summer schedule, so I don't know when to propose that until we can actually take a poll of all the members of the commission, and with the absence of two of our members, it would be difficult, I think, to find an answer to that right now, but if you're amenable to that, then I will work with David to try to find a time and come up with a, a session that we can hold. I would like your input.
Good idea.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I think it should be.
Okay. Then I would suggest that we move to the next item on the agenda. Point of order.
On the historic preservation, I thought we had a work session, there are three property owners that I think have the potential to request a request.
Okay. That, that would be appreciated very much.
More the mayor.
Right, Madam Chair, next on the agenda, proposed text amendment to Appendix Four zoning ordinance of the Spalding, of Spalding County Articles One through Four pertaining to necessary corrections, clarifications, and improvements to uses and standards in certain portions of the zoning ordinance.
If, staff introduction?
Yes ma'am, so this is, these four articles here are a reflection of the two workshops and other meetings we have had to make the necessary changes to these, especially Article Four, where there's a lot of changes to the general zoning procedures that needed to be in line with recent house bills and things of that nature. So that's probably the most important aspect of this, arguably before that is Article Two, where we added some necessary definitions and changed some. Obviously, over the next course of the summer, over the next few months, you'll be introduced back to Article Five through Eleven, which we've already talked about as well, but for the sake of time now, we're just pursuing Articles One through Four, and like I said, this is what we've talked about a lot during those workshops. I will bring to the boards, one, one thing to the board's attention, I'm not trying to kill us tonight, but I put in here, if the county zoning attorney and the board are not comfortable with it, we can certainly take it out, and the variance part, the special exception part, and the rezoning parts, there is a part in here where it seems like a loophole to me, but, or an endless loop, it says, I'll take the variance part, for example, but it, the same verbiage applies to special exceptions and rezonings, if an applicant for a variance is at the time of application determined by the administrative officer to be in violation of the zoning ordinance, the administrative officers will not accept or process any application from that applicant until the applicant voluntarily removes or changes the cause of the violation and ceases to be in violation. I put it added in parentheses, other than a violation, other than that for which the variance may be sought, because if you remove the violation that's based on the variance, you have no need for variance, you have no need for rezoning, special exception, so unforceful, so, so on and so forth, so I put that clarification in. If the zoning attorney, board is not comfortable with that, we can remove that, but I thought that was a necessary clarification.
Well, I'll have text loops as good as the next fellow, but I think that that does clear it, clear it up some, because you have, I will tell you, David, because we haven't had a chance to talk about it, we have very rarely used that stringently, or applied it stringently to people who came in trying to take the position we preferred to try to get them into compliance with doing the applications. But I can, I can see how it would be a text loop, and it would, by definition, correct somebody, somebody who comes in and corrects the requirement is then not in need of the variance, I understand that. I hadn't thought about it, but yes.
So that's the only comment I had.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have, wait a minute, do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Do we have anybody?
It was advertised, it's on the agenda, we have to offer a public hearing if, if it's the will of the commission.
Oh, okay, all right.
Stephen will talk again for a fee.
So moved.
Just in case you.
I have a motion to open a public hearing, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, the public hearing is open.
Madam Chair, there's no one who has signed up for this application.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, moved.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
I have a second. You have a second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, the public hearing is closed. Staff report.
I, just what I've said already, we've already scrutinized this quite a bit, I have nothing for that.
Are there any comments or input from the members of the commission?
Appears to be well, well done.
Then I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve, do I have a motion, do I have a second to that motion?
Certainly do.
I have a motion and a second to approve this item, all in favor, please raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda, proposed text amendment to the Spalding County Code of Ordinances Appendix Four zoning really, related to revisions to Appendix C Board of Appeals.
An introduction by either the staff attorney or the, or I mean, the attorney or the staff.
This is an amendment which will remove the Board of Appeals and cause it to cease to exist, the reason for that is because as it stands right now, the Board of Appeals, after House Bill fourteen oh five, basically only has two functions, variant, to review variances and to review appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator, now you've got one of those coming up for hearing in July, but that's the first one in probably twelve years. So there's no reason to have two boards, so the authority and the responsibilities of the Board of Appeals are being consolidated into you, and you will then be known after, after approval of this as the Planning and Appeals Board. Now that said, looking through the other provisions of the ordinance, we have identified approximately forty-eight places where we have got to do other text cleanup, where there are references to the Board of Appeals or the Planning Commission, and that will come next month, you'll have that ordinance next month.
Thank you for that summary. So, it was advertised for a public hearing, so do I have a motion for, to open a public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
You do have a second.
Motion and a second, open public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition.
Madam Chair, no one has signed up for this application.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second. Who are you, me, Frank, yeah?
And the second to close a public hearing, all in favor, raise your hand.
Read this out.
All opposed, there is no opposition, the public hearing is closed. Is there any com, further comments from staff?
Ditto what the county zoning attorney said.
Thank you, is there any further discussion with the members of the commission?
I don't know how staff has been able to get all this together.
Yeah, I know.
I really don't, I, I give you kudos, Dr. Ledbetter, for Dr. Allen being with us.
I used to have dark hair, he used to have hair.
Can tell you about the dark hair, we can feel that.
Next item.
Have you, you need a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a motion?
We do, uh, let's make a motion for us.
To approve, uh, do I have a second to that motion?
Certainly do.
I have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, the item passes.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda, proposed text amendment to Appendix Four zoning ordinance of Spalding County Article fourteen A C one C Manufacturing Light, Section fourteen oh three B eight, in Article seventeen P D D Plan Development District, Section seventeen oh three A six pertaining to revisions to data center standards and processes.
Introduction.
Okay, last but not least, this item tonight, we'd already had data center stipulations, however, a few months ago, we became aware of some others which we thought were necessary, and they were actually part of approval conditions tonight for the one, the only changes we have is, first of all, we added a definition of data center decommissioning, and then we talked about requirements for the utility availability letters, the closed loop water system whenever possible, and the acoustic noise study, we also added the, officially added the language for the decommissioning standards and processes, so that's the only things that have changed.
Thank you for that summary. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion to open the public, I have two motions to open the public hearing, do I have a second? Can I have the second?
Second.
The, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, and this item also passes.
Madam Chair, Stephen Jones has signed up to speak this evening on this, this item.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, for the record, my name is Stephen Jones, the law firm at Taylor Doome, I'm at sixteen hundred Parkwood Circle, Suite two hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero three three nine.
You have ten minutes.
I'm nine, we'll use it.
Use your three.
Yeah.
And we'll appreciate it.
Just a couple of comments on this ordinance, you have an existing requirement for data centers in C one C that I'd like to address, as well as the requirement I believe also comes into P D D, and that's for exterior roadways facing walls or any wall facing a residential property to not be metal and consist of forty percent stone or masonry facade. Masonry or stone across a two hundred or a million square foot building is a lot, especially when it's forty, forty percent, and it's generally inconsistent with the requirements imposed upon other industrial buildings, ala the lakes at Green Valley, so we just ask that all industrial uses be treated the same in terms of exterior materials. Going back to what we discussed in some of the applications earlier tonight, full availability letters, we have a chicken and the egg problem, with you, with electric, and this provision does not say when those are required, but it could be interpreted to be required at the time of special exception, well, if you're requiring electric availability letters at the time of special exception, you get caught in another loop, I can't file the special exception because I can't get my availability letter, I can't get my availability letter because I can't get my zoning, so I'd ask you to consider a tweak to that as well, and require those utility statements at the time of land disturbance permitting. Finally, G calls for an acoustic noise study, we'd just like some clarity on what that is and when that's required, is that a zoning item or is that a permitting item, and what is entailed in that study? That's it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed, there is no opposition, the, the item passes.
So in response to his comments, I think the availability letters at the time of the land disturbance and a noise study at the time of, at land disturbance are reasonable, I could reflect that in the language by the time it hits the commissioners. We did clarify with the lakes at Green Valley with the I D A, and I can certainly make it more clear in here that masonry also includes concrete panels, so it doesn't necessarily have to be fancy brick or stone, they consider that concrete paneling, which you find on a lot of warehouse-type buildings like this, as, as masonry, so.
And regarding the acoustic noise study, did you have more specificity on that?
At the time of permitting as well.
But that, but, but he also asked you what, he made a comment that he wasn't sure what that meant.
Just the limiting of the noise from the inside activities onto the outside of us trying to deaden the amount of noise that adjacent. trying to deaden the, the amount of noise that adjacent properties might hear.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion, information that you would like to?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, I still got Martha McDaniel's ghost hovering over me. And, uh, she devised, you know, the A K B overlay, and I was her appointee. And I don't want us to get to the point where we've got a bunch of metal buildings out there, looking like we, uh, with the headquarters for Butler.
Frank, as a general rule, we've been trying to apply the A K B ordinance standards that the I D A has used.
Okay.
That's where, that's where we're trying to go, so that it follows the same standards, excuse me, as lakes at Green Valley.
That's good, yeah, that would be a good role model.
Any other comments from the commission? So in regarding to this petition, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I'll motion to approve, do I have a second?
Is that with the changes that David recommended?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Specifically with the changes?
Well, then I will second that with the, with the additions you've made on that, David.
We have a motion, uh, with a second to, to approve with the conditions.
Did you do the second?
That did?
Yes, sorry, did.
All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed, there is no opposition. The motion carries.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, the meeting minutes for April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, I gave you some more, gave you some more detailed version of it this afternoon, apologize for the lateness of it, but it was a lot, um, so.
Everybody have a chance to take a look at those minutes?
Yeah. There's a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from the April twenty-ninth, not, two thousand twenty-five, uh, meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, there is no opposition, the item passes. Any comments?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
Special privilege from any member of the commission.
I don't raise my arm any higher, I've had it, I've had my shoulder replaced twice, and, uh, I just can't get it up anymore.
We have that in common. Is it your right one?
And the left.
And, well, I've, both of mine have been replaced, but my right one has failed thr, twice.
I've had two reverses.
Oh, I can't do a reverse anymore. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Same way.
I have a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Oh, why, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting, all in favor, raise your hand, all opposed?
Raise your hand if you can.
The motion carries, this meeting is now adjourned, and I thank you for your patience and your continued participation.
Yes, thank you.